All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call the March 12th Caroline County Board of Supervisors Meeting to Order. Let the record show that all six supervisors are here. To my far right, we have Mr. Clayton Forehand from the Madison District. To my immediate right, we have Mr. Floyd Thomas from the Madison District. To my immediate left, we have Mrs. Nancy Long from the Port Royal District. To her left, we have Mr. Jeff Sealy from the Bowling Green District. And to his left, we have Mr. Reginald Underwood from the Reedy Church District. And I am Jeff Black, representing the Western Caroline District. At this time, I'm going to ask Mrs. Long to lead us in an invocation.
Please stand. Dear Heavenly Father, we give thanks for this country, for this beautiful day, for the right to join together, make decisions as best for our community. We give thanks for those who are active in their communities and for those who serve others. We ask your Heavenly Father that you be with this board and lead us to decisions that would be pleasing in your eyes. And we ask your Heavenly Father that we all return home safely to our loved ones. These things I ask in your name. Amen. And now the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, opening board comments. I will start with Mr. Underwood.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just have a couple. I attended the opening of the Carmel Church Fire Station on Saturday, and I think within less than an hour, they were outrunning a call. Just like to thank the citizens for your support, your tax dollars, and helping us to continue to grow Caroline, to make it a safe haven for the community. Second, I'm gonna steal something from Mr. Black. Mr. Black talks about the amount of litter on the highways. It is really out of control now. And we're gonna have to ask the citizens of the county, because these are our backroads. I'm not talking about 95, I'm not talking about 301. I'm talking about all of our community roads, particularly in the Carmel Church area where we have the fire, the fast food restaurants coming out of Hanover, where the Burger King and the 7-Eleven. Going down to our major roads, you'll see trash along the highways. We're gonna have to do a better job as a community. I don't know what's, I asked the sheriff about possibly going back to the regional jail and asking about having some of those offenders picking up trash along the highways. But we have to do a better job to keep our communities clean. So anything that you can do as a community, I would certainly urge you to voice the fact that we need to keep Caroline beautiful. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You are welcome. Mr. Sealy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just like to echo the opening of the Carmel Church Fire Station and what an improvement it's gonna make on that side of the county. And I do want to employ Mr. Thomas, and I hope he'll remind everybody again, call their insurance companies, because the station's across from a large subdivision. But I'd also like to give congratulations to the Bowling Green Volunteer Fire Department. They had their awards banquet also on Saturday evening. We still have a good set of volunteers. They're running calls. And we have a father and son team that were actually awarded with the highest number of hours for the year there. And I just, that kind of dedication is something we all need to see more of in the volunteer area. So congratulations to the Bowling Green Volunteer Fire Department. And thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Mrs. Long?
Because I want to thank all those who were involved in the preparing for the opening of Station 10. I have to admit, I think I had more fun at that opening than I have anyplace else. It was a good time, and everybody was just, I think, so delighted that we'd finally have crossed that threshold, and we were in operation. And I think a lot of lives will be saved, and a lot of time on other calls will be cut down because they're in a good location. And we now are, I believe, a brown-free zone county. I haven't seen the latest reports, but I know that used to be the only brown area coverage-wise in the county. So hopefully, we're in good shape. And it's a beautiful station, so I hope everybody should enjoy working there. The litter comment I will touch base on also. You know, it's really hard to control. You can teach it at home. You can encourage people to keep bags in their car, to put stuff in, little trash cans that'll hook up. But if the sheriff can't do a whole lot, but if you see a bag of trash on the road, and if you find an envelope with an address on it in that bag, you call the sheriff, and they will come out, and then they have something to go on. So it doesn't happen very often, but I know occasionally I do see bags laying on the side of the road. So if you know you've got someone who's tended to use that road as a dump site, you know, play detective a little bit, and safely, and see if you can help the sheriff out any. My other comment would be that we have St. Patrick's Day coming up, so I hope you all have a very safe and happy St. Patrick's Day on 17, and enjoy the spring weather. Thank you.
Mr. Thomas?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a couple of brief ones, or a few brief ones. One is, of course, I attended the opening for Station 10, and I couldn't wear my hat inside, but I'm wearing my hat up here. Want to again say thank you to all the firefighters who worked on that. But not only them, it's a long tradition of firefighting, so I wanted to thank the volunteers, who used to be all we had a long time ago. I appreciate all the service that they gave us. The county got a little big quick, so we had to get professionals, and we're all working together. So I do appreciate that. Personally, I said my story then. It's important that firefighters are the ones who run to danger when the rest of the folks are running away from danger. So we do appreciate that. I do have a follow-up. I think Chief Loftus, if you could help me, a couple of residents have said that ISO only does their changes twice a year. I don't know if that's the case, if it's just done in July, if there's anything the county can do to help them, you're not sure, appreciate that. And the last one I have, we're gonna discuss the festival permit fees, and I'd like to know if we could add that to the agenda officially, Mr. Chairman.
We'll do that on amendments to the agenda.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Forehand? I too attended the Carmel Church Fire Station opening, and great event, great station, great folks. Really, I think we added 18 people in that station, so that's 18 people that are gonna be serving 24/7. Well, six people per shift, so it's, anyway, adding good service to the county. One other piece that we learned, that the lead time for fire apparatus is only getting larger. We ordered a ladder apparatus last year. It's still another year out, so it's about two years out. We're learning that it's over, well over three years to get a piece of apparatus now, where it used to be 10 to 12 months, just a few years ago. So getting large pieces of equipment for public service needs is getting, you know, you have to plan out even further. And then the price is, of course, going up exponentially, as we can all imagine. So, anyway, just wanted to share that, and thank you.
And I will finish, I will be the last one to say the same thing, but I was also there at the opening of the fire station, and it is, Chief Loftus, that is a first-class, that's an awesome station, so something that Caroline should be very proud of, considering it's our first county-owned fire station. And I think one of the things that this board, a lot of times people like to complain about government and so forth, but one of the things that I think this board can all agree with, even though we have differences of opinions on a lot of stuff, is we've been pretty committed over the last three or four years to helping Chief out with getting the number of firefighters. It's not just the station itself, it's the people inside the station. And I think we've hired 21, if that's correct, Chief, 21 new personnel, fire and EMS to help with that station. And that's a lot of people that we've had to hire, but it also makes our county much safer. And that's one of the key parts of functions of government, is for the citizen's safety. Second thing, I want to thank the citizens in Lake Landor. Several citizens have been getting petitions together to bring to us. I would imagine they will be bringing the petitions at the next meeting about the rate increase for Aqua Virginia. I think it's starting to hit the bills now, and when you're paying, you know, for water and sewer, and your bill is $200 a month for 5,000 gallons, and it's over $200 a month, there's a problem there. And it's quite a burden on the citizens in that area, so I think that petition is coming to us. Finally, I do want to address two things. I had, on the litter situation, we did have a meeting with several, Sheriff Moser was there, I know that Mr. Height was there, our Commonwealth attorney, Mr. Sheeble was there, in regards to what we can do for the litter program. And obviously, we can't tax our way out of this. I think all the board members would agree with that, like, we just can't hire enough litter personnel with all the roads that we have. However, one of the things that we can do as board members is try to encourage adopt-a-highway programs. I actually got a call today from Pause for Purple Hearts. They're doing a litter pickup, and I will be helping with them on April 13th along Route 1. So I know I've talked to the superintendent about getting the schools to participate. I haven't, we haven't quite formalized yet, and getting the schools on each side of their school to help with an adopt-a-highway program as well. So the more of those active adopt-a-highway programs that we can get, it goes along with what Mr. Underwood said about the citizens helping out. And the last thing is kind of a personal one. I had to go to a funeral on Monday for my previous planning commission, Scott Sullivan, who passed away on February 29th. And as a supervisor, when we get elected, you don't know what to do, and you're kind of, you're first in the job, and you have to appoint a bunch of people. And one of the biggest and most important jobs that we have is to appoint someone to the planning commission. And I really, and I'm sure all the other supervisors up here would agree, a planning commission appointment is a very, very important role in the county. And I didn't really know Scott a ton, but in the few years that he served the Western Caroline District, I really, really enjoyed talking to him about his perspective. We didn't always agree, but I, it really, he really opened my eyes to some stuff, and I'm gonna miss him quite a bit, because not only was he a political appointment, but he became a close friend. So I just wanna, if we could, just for, do a moment of silence for him, I would very much appreciate it. So thank you. Thank you very much, and we will move on. Amendments to the agenda, amendments to the agenda. Do we have any amendments to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, could we add what we have listed as a discussion of the festival permit application fee as 10A?
All right, we will add permit, the festival permit as 10A. Does anyone else have any other thing that they would like to add? If not, I will take it.
And I don't know how the other board members, but I can't seem to get an answer on number 10. And since neither Mr. Parton or Mr. Cully are here this evening, if we shouldn't remove that and put it on a, another, an upcoming meeting, that is the discussion of possible adoption of amended solar ordinance. I have no idea what the word amended means. So it just seems like we're not gonna have all the answers tonight, and maybe we should put that off to another meeting. But I will leave that up to the decision of the board.
Would the board like to defer that to another meeting?
I'll second that.
All right, well, we'll just, yeah. Is everyone okay? We can just do a consensus? Do we need a motion to remove that, or can we just do by consensus?
Just do by amending the agenda?
Yeah, yeah, amending the agenda. So we'll take off, is everyone okay with taking off number 10? All right, seems like everyone's okay with taking off number 10. So I will take a, we will, we will just make that, then, Mr. Thomas, we'll just make your festival permit 10.
Fine.
Okay, and then, all right, so I have, if I can get a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as amended. All in favor? Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We will move on to our presentations and reports. Our first one is a recognition of Steve Parish and Kitty Diamond for service to Upper Caroline Volunteer Fire Department.
Ms. Long? If I may, Kitty Diamond is here tonight, and I'd like her to come on down. And Steve Parish could not be with us tonight, and we are going to record this and bring it to his house, so he can watch that with a number of folks that are here tonight from the volunteer community. So.
Why don't you do Kitty's first?
Okay. I have a resolution and appreciation of Hollis Kitty Diamond for her 50 years of service to the citizens of Caroline County. Whereas Hollis Kitty Diamond has devoted her time and talents to the fire EMS service for 50 years. Whereas it is appropriate at this time to highlight Kitty Diamond's many achievements and contributions as a life member of the Bowling Green Volunteer Rescue Squad and the Upper Caroline Volunteer Fire Department, and to extend to her special recognition and condemnation for a job well done. And she has dedicated her life to the service of others in the county of Caroline. And whereas Kitty Diamond has brought an undying loyalty to the county's fire and EMS department, a clear understanding of organizational needs and priorities, a commitment to carefully-defined objectives, a commitment to volunteerism, a wisdom born of experience, and the courage to always do the right thing for the right reason. Now therefore be resolved that the Caroline County Board of Supervisors does hereby thank and commend Hollis Kitty Diamond for her 50 years of dedicated and unselfish service to the Caroline County Department of Fire, Rescue, and Emergency Management, and wishes her a success in all future endeavors. Adopted this 12th day of March 2024, Mr. Charles Cully and Mr. Black, Chairman.
We would like to present to Kitty from the department, your 50 years of service award. So thank you for that time. Thank you to all the CPR instructors and teachers you've made and students.
Still doing it.
Still doing it. She's not giving up, she's just gonna take administrative role. So would you like her to come up there for photos?
Sure.
Okay.
Where's Casey?
Yeah. All right. We're gonna go that way, Kitty.
You want to invite the volunteers?
If all the volunteers would come up as well.
Maybe you should say, we've got one, but we need to make a correction. Yeah, you know, we got a resolution, but we need to. You guys should stay there, right?
No, we're gonna do Steve's.
Let me know you'll stay there for Steve, and do another picture for Steve, or?
No, we're gonna do the resolution.
Yeah, I'm fine.
Mr. Black and Ms. Long, Chief James is gonna accept it for Chief Parish.
So, see if I can get through this one. It's been a rough year for Upper Caroline. We've lost a couple of good people up there, and people have retired, and well-deserved retirements as it is. So I am proud to read, resolution and appreciation of Volunteer District Chief Stephen Parish for 64 years of service to the citizens of Caroline County. Whereas Volunteer District Chief Stephen Parish began his volunteer career in Caroline in 1960, and has served as a member of Lady Smith Volunteer Fire Rescue Squad, Bowling Green Volunteer Rescue Squad, and Upper Carolina Volunteer Fire Department, thusly dedicating his time and talents to the fire EMS service for 64 years. Chief Parish worked hard to earn firefighting and emergency medical technician certifications, including his cardiac technical certification, thusly serving the community as an advanced life support provider for many years. And whereas Volunteer District Fire Chief Stephen Parish served as a leader in the founding of the Upper Caroline Fire Department in 1973, and has since served as its only district chief. During his intern, he twice guided the acquisition of land, construction of two fire stations, as well as the development and training of staff. District Chief Parish has led his staff and the station, the community, and on more emergency incident scenes than can be counted. And whereas it is appropriate at this time to highlight Chief Parish's distinguished career and lifetime of achievements, and to extend to him special recognition and culmination for a job well done as a pillar of the community. He has dedicated his life to the service of the community and visitors of Caroline County. And whereas Chief Parish has brought an unwavering devotion to the county's fire and EMS department, a clear understanding and prioritization of organizational needs, a commitment to diligently meeting defined objectives, a commitment to volunteerism, a wisdom born of experience, and the courage to always do what is right regardless of the personal impact. Now therefore be it resolved that the Caroline County Board of Supervisors hereby expresses its deepest appreciation and gratitude to Volunteer District Chief Stephen Parish for his 64 years of dedication and selfless service to the Caroline County Department of Fire, Rescue, and Emergency Management, and wishes him success in all his future endeavors. Adopted this 12th day of March 2024.
Accepting this will be Chief Kenny James.
While everybody's coming up here, any of you who are vote in Upper Caroline Fire Rescue have seen Mr. Parish there. He is, was always there, between him and Kitty and Kenny, and all the people that they have trained over the years, including their sons. He and Anna were just a force to be reckoned with up there. And Steve, when you see this video, wish you the best, and hope to see you again soon.
All right, next up on the agenda, we have a Meadow Event Park update with Ms. Marlene Joliffe.
Good evening, and thank you all for a chance to give a kind of a high-level overview of 2023 at the Meadow Event Park. I'll walk through my presentation and then be happy to answer questions. So overall, we had a great year, and late in the year, actually, it doesn't seem to be advancing. There we go. So when I give reports to our State Farm Bureau Board, I always try to look at not just last year, but what happened five years ago, and where were we 10 years ago. So in the last decade, well, Virginia Farm Bureau's owned the property for now a little for now a little over a decade, which, when you look at that long-term, time has really flown. And what they've really built is a destination, a very diverse community of people that travel to Caroline County and to the Meadow Event Park and built a lot of traditions for the future. Our events, especially the State Fair of Virginia, you know, we're over ten years in at that property. Now people build their own traditions there and it's a place that people love to come to. In that timeframe since dating back to the 2014 fair at the Meadow Event Park, when you look at the state fairs and the events throughout the year, over, right at four million people have engaged with the property. I think it's healthy to look back to see where you've come and to kind of look at the big picture. In 2023, we had a, just a really exceptional year. In June, we had the first-ever major national event at the Meadow Event Park with the BMW Motorcycle Owners Rally. Even with a very rainy, almost a completely rained-out opening Saturday of the state fair, we hit right at five hundred and forty thousand people attending events at the Meadow Event Park. By event days, that's simply really a total of on every given weekend or day of the week, how many total events? You could have five one-day events going on, that's five event days. So, we had our busiest year to date with activity at the Meadow. If you look back to 2015, that year, that was my first year at the Meadow and that was a hurricane year. Twenty twenty, of course, the pandemic and then coming out of that really solid activities and, you know, another growth spurt this year. So, I think that speaks to kind of fine-tuning who we are and I think we know who we are and just continually trying to build who we are, but also being smart about when opportunities arise, grabbing hold of them and making them happen. Last year's state fair was right at two hundred and ten thousand people and we had, we had a rain out on the first Saturday and had too many people on the second Saturday. We were really at capacity, which, right at fifty thousand people and that's really maxes our property out because no one wanted to leave and we were on the cusp of running out of parking. Illuminate, we, we count by cars, we also estimate people and we track, have a system for tracking how many people are in a car. So, our illuminate event this past Christmas generated about a hundred and twenty-eight thousand visitors, people. And our after-hours concert series last year was right at sixty thousand people and those are our paid attendance numbers that we work with our partner on. So, I also, I look back and when you look at the very first year of the illuminate light show and you look at every year since, the, the, right at, about, on the right-hand side, the very high-capacity was pandemic year when all you could do was drive in a car and, you know, it was a popular thing to do. But you look long-term and two hundred and seventy-nine thousand cars have driven through the light show. So, in total, you start looking at everything that's happened. It's kind of fun to look at the magnitude of the impact of the facility. So, one thing I'm super excited about that I've wanted to do for a while, and this is just a draft sample of one slide that I just got in my hands late Friday. We engaged a firm last year to do an economic impact study for the property. So, when all is said and done, and I hope to have numbers here in about two weeks, really, I've got to dig through a final report, which I've not been given yet. So, it's gonna look at what we spend to run the Meadow Event Park and where that money goes. How many jobs does it generate? Which counties is it going, you know, to? We surveyed vendors that do events, we surveyed attendees at events. We tried to get a cross-sample of, of everything we're doing. And so, this is just one slide out of the, what will be a very lengthy report. But in this report, and actually, I think they're heading at the top, if you look down at the bottom-left. So, our operational spending generated, had an economic impact of about ten point two million in the region in 2023, supporting forty-two jobs. I really liked that, but I also was very excited on the right-hand side and the paragraph at the bottom, over ninety percent of non-payroll expenditures went, stayed in the region. We work very, very hard to hire locally, to hire contractors, to spend money on supplies. And so, that's a solid number. There are things that we obviously have to spend out of state, like entertainment and certain specific areas. But I shared this with you all just to see, you know, what, the story that we're gonna tell once we get the full report back. And very often in the entertainment world, people, I think, don't necessarily see the, they don't look at what we do as a, an economic development project, but it's very clear to me and it should be clear to everybody that it really is economic development. It may not be a warehouse or a structure per se, but it is economic activity that's generating a real impact in the county and our neighboring counties and in the region. So, as soon as I have a full report, I'll be sharing that with you all, so you have numbers across the board. One reason I think we succeed is we've built, this is just a snapshot of one of our two Facebook pages. We've really been working on the Meadow Event Park brand and we, we worked hard on that last year, that audience grew twenty-one percent. And you see the impressions, the engagement. What I tell our promoters and, and what I know to be true is that of any event venue in the region, we do a top job of marketing the events that are at our property. We don't just sell space and walk away. We book events, we work with our promoters, we push them to our audiences. So, this is just one piece. And then you add to that, our state fair audience has a fan base on Facebook of almost a hundred and thirty thousand. We were able to grow it another four percent last year. So, when you can cross-promote an Oktoberfest or our own Ag Days or maybe aspects of the BMW rally to this audience that buys into the state fair, it's a pretty powerful marketing machine. We also used this last year and we won an award in our industry for the best social media campaign in a category that has probably five hundred different fairs. And what we did was share the story of the people behind the state fair. So, we featured our state police first sergeant who leads that command. We featured Mr. Linwood Broaddus, who's in the audience, who does a lot of our Ask a Farmer activities. We featured people who maybe haven't been able to be front and center and it really, it was, it was fun and eye-opening and lifted a lot of people up and it won, won an award. So, new events in, coming into this year, we changed the focus of our farm festival into two days of field trips and that has, is really taking hold. I think we finally found the right combination and what we should be focusing on. The Sawmill, it's called Expo Richmond. It's the East Coast's largest sawmill logging event and it moved from Richmond International Raceway to our property and it will start in another, we're actually now right at, we are a month away. Both sides of the property will be full of logging equipment and logging demonstrations. It's a big undertaking, but the good news is we have it on the books this year and it will repeat every other year. So, we already are holding dates for twenty-five, I'm sorry, twenty, twenty-six and then twenty-eight. We also are holding dates right now for the BMW folks to come back in 2026 as well. We added yet another AKC Dog Competition Show. We landed a large gaming competition that moved to the Meadow from the convention center. And one of the brightest lights that I, that I see is that our indoor, our consumer trade shows are getting excellent traffic and people are coming out, they're buying, they're visiting. And the fishing expo that we had in January had the best attendance at their show that they've had since 2019. So, a lot of good. I often get asked, you know, do, have you lost any shows? And typically, the only, the main reason we would lose a show at this point is if they outgrow our facility. The, we do have some shows at capacity in the Farm Bureau Center, so that's something that we're gonna have to really look hard at to determine where we invest infrastructure dollars. And then, as you all know, I'm, I'm a big fan of being a community partner and so we created these fun logos, we're now a year in, I think, because I think sometimes if you don't pat yourself on the back, no one else is going to do it for you. So, we, we've had the Fredericksburg Food Bank for years. We hosted the Caroline's Promise Entrepreneurial Expo and it just went, it was great. Kids were selling out of their items and that's what you want. Anytime we get a phone call that someone needs training space, we say yes, unless there's an event that makes that, you know, not feasible. We've supported the Polar Bear Plunge and the other entities who benefit from that event as well. Lots of 4H and FFA initiatives. We give tickets to nonprofits for the state fair to use in raffles. My favorite thing, well, two favorite things of the year. We did a, a discount during the state fair week and very simple and just tried to push people into the park early in the day and donated all of those food items and school supplies stayed here in Caroline County and were distributed through social services. Can't remember the total on the food, but it was, it was in the low thousands as far as the weight of the food and just a large number of school supplies. And then the BMW group, when they were here, through their philanthropic efforts, made a direct impact on Caroline's Promise of right at fifteen thousand dollars. So, if you can be in business and do good things for other people, I think it's a win-win. So, this picture of mud, a lot of mud, is a thirty-two-hundred-square-foot restroom that is under construction right now at the main gate. We're trying to get it usable for the large logging expo and our first set of rodeos. It's gonna be, it's going to be a very close race. It's, we've had rain, really no construction issues, no supply issues, just rain. But the, the nice thing about this facility and the way we're building it is, and it's kind of hard to tell with these pictures, but it will serve fairgoers and guests coming into the park from the outside and we've never had that. You have to come into the fair before you get to a restroom and that's not good. So, it'll serve the outside, but it also will more than triple the service to the interior of folks moving from the main gate area to the livestock area. So, when you do what we do, you get really excited about a new restroom. It's one of the most important things that we need to have for our guests. Challenges, this slide didn't change from last year. Things cost more, we all know that. There is more competition in the Henrico, you know, Richmond market for venues, the new sporting facility at Virginia Center Commons to date. We've only, we've lost one wrestling event to that facility, so we're just, we're focusing on what we do best. Then third is infrastructure, three hundred and thirty acres of property to take care of and it, it is, when you look at the age of the buildings, we're now over, like the Farm Bureau Center was built in the 2008, 2009 years. So, it's not fresh, it's not new and you start having to replace, you know, lots of things. So, this year's state fair, September twenty-seventh through the sixth of October. And I love our theme this year, where homegrown happens. It's very much a focused on Virginia and the Commonwealth and all of the programs that we do that are tied not just to agriculture, but people and people who do good things across the state. I wanted to mention, you know, part of what the state fair is, we see the rods, we see the food concessions, we talk a lot about all that, but the real backbone of what we do is really our youth development programs. Recently, we added a, a video interview function to our scholarship application process. So, over three different time periods, we interviewed, it was the top tier of scholarship applicants and I think we ended up interviewing probably twenty-four young leaders. And it really was, it was inspiring because what I heard from these young people is how much they see the fair as an opportunity to not just show their animal and win and learn and compete and to mature and to grow and learn skills, but they really saw theirself in a role of talking to the public about what agriculture really is. And I think that's critical today. When you, you know, we, we so often kind of stereotype our young folks, but there are a lot of really great kids out there doing big things and for them to be your spokesperson to the general public about how our food gets on the table, there is not a thing bad about that. So, that was fun to get to do that and that's, you know, we're gonna continue our focus on our youth development programs and just fine-tuning what we do. So, that was fast and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about any of that information.
So, anyone have any questions? Mr. Thomas?
Thank you, Mrs. Long. I, I just have a couple of quick questions. Are all of the new events that you mentioned ticketed events?
Um, no.
The majority are?
Let me look at that sheet. So, the Sawmill Logging Show is, on that, the gaming is a closed, private competition where people register. I, I don't think it's open to the public. Our educational field trips, yes. Dog shows are not.
So, there's, there's no fee to get into the dog show?
Not from a public standpoint.
Okay.
You enter more as a competitor.
Okay. And, and my other question was, I thought we discussed this a while back and the ad you put out, we're gonna say Caroline County, somewhere on it. Is that the same for your logos?
We have a Meadow Event Park Caroline County logo that we use on most everything that we do.
Okay, the ones we just showed didn't have Caroline County, did?
No, I just dropped, if you look at the one, actually, it's on the opening slide. That's the one that we, you'll see on our website and most of our ads.
But, but these in the last page are not. They don't say Caroline at all. Did you plan to do that?
I, I really don't know how to answer that, actually, I hadn't thought about it.
Is it possible you could do that?
We can always try to do that wherever it fits. And sometimes when you, that logo, you just, I pull it to use, there might be text that we use with it that references place or time or more description about it.
I was just thinking, the, the one on the last page that we have, maybe somewhere like right above the twenty twenty-four, it could say Caroline County.
We've not ever worked that into the actual state fair logo itself, but we use that in our visitor guide, like we will have that logo in the publications.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else have anything?
Just trying to what?
Hi, Ms. Joliffe. Just wanted to say from the community, thank you so much for your, your support. I think you're a great addition and you've done super things for us and we certainly appreciate it and we look to continue a great working relationship and we're here to support and do all we can to make sure that this is a- to make sure that this is a partnership.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
All right, next up, we have the VDOT report with Mr. Bates, Kyle Bates.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Madam Vice Chair, members of the board. Thank you for having me again. I'm going to go through some projects as per usual and talk about a few good updates that we have. I got a few things at the end to, to cover and then I'll take any questions that you have. So I'll jump right into it. This will be probably the last time I show this slide. This is the Route 639 widening project. So it's all done. There's not a whole lot more to talk about. We finalized the permit with your team here in Caroline County for some of the landscaping. We did the final walkthrough in January, they hit some punch list items. So while I do love this picture, it's probably the last time I'll show it on a board report. So moving on, Route 1 over South River. So if you notice over the last week or so, they did a lot of resurfacing out there. They had some eradication from the old markings that they milled that area up and put brand new asphalt back. So it all looks a whole lot better. There's a little bit of tar here and there that'll come off over time over some of the older pavement, but the brand new pavement looks great. So again, it's probably the last time I show this slide. This is the 301 Chase Street. I know we talked at length about this one at the last board meeting. This is a $14.1 million project. Preliminary engineering has started, so you will see some people out there doing some survey work. They're just, that's, that's all it is at, at this time is just getting some survey done. Moving on. Stopped working for me. Should I be pointing? Y'all wouldn't let me get out that easy.
Now, are you bringing the Wegmans to the 639 too? Is that part of the deal?
I don't do any of that.
Behind the Chick-fil-A.
All right, so this one, this is a little bit of a unique slide. I know we, we discussed this last time too. Fort Walker, they ended up getting a permit and did some work on the dam. I have not heard, I know that they're done with what I'll consider some initial work. I don't know if they have to come back per DCR to do any further work, so I'll wait to hear more from them. Mr. Sealy, you had asked if the bridge could be widened. There may be the potential as we go through, when that time comes, but I don't know when that will be. So honestly, this is another slide that I'll probably take off for the foreseeable future until I know more from Fort Walker and DCR. It could be very soon, it could be years. So I'll ping them and see if I have any further updates, but at this time, this, this project is, is going to be indefinitely on hold until we know more about the dam. So moving on to 638 over South River. So this is one that is funded through the State of Good Repair, meaning there's federal funds on this. This project is going to require a lane closure. This isn't happening until the fall of 2025 through fall of 2026. As I always do for our closures for these bridge projects, we'll be sending out emails to the first responders, school transportation and anybody that this is going to affect. So the detour for this project is going to be Lady Smith Road to Page Road, but again, that won't happen until fall of 2025. Here we have the eastbound 207 Bridge. This is a superstructure repair and a substructure rehab. So if you remember from the last board meeting, basically anything that goes horizontal like this is going to be ripped out and replaced and anything that goes vertically is going to be rehabbed. This is part of a design build. You, Mr. Thomas, you had had some questions about the timeframe. I don't have a whole lot more to tell you at this time. This is a design build project, so it's in a bundle with multiple other bridges and they have not signed the contract yet. But as far as the timeframe goes, they are supposed to be completed with all of the bridges in that bundle, including this eastbound 207 by summer of 2028. So as soon as they sign the contract, you'll have a, a better idea of what that's going to be. They can dictate their own schedule and that's how we get the costs back through that design build bundle.
What's the timeframe for that? Is it like 18 month, 24 month project?
I, we don't know yet. They're, they're going to have to give us their schedule as soon as they sign that contract and kind of bid on that. So, and it will be very, it will be this, the sister project, if you will, to when we did the westbound bridge. So essentially all the eastbound traffic will be one lane in each direction on the westbound side. This is not really a VDOT slide, but I know it's, it's exciting information for you all. So there was economic development projects, your folks through your economic development department, applied through the CTP and got awarded for funding, for design, for Dry Bridge Road and for Ruth or Glenn Road, which they are going to be looking at doing some widening and maybe even straightening out some of the curves on Dry Bridge Road, understanding the larger traffic that, that traverses through those areas, as well as looking at some structure upgrades as well. And that's a, a very well needed thing out there. So, yes, sir.
Question before you leave there. The pass through Commonwealth Transportation Board in 2023.
Yes, sir.
That means the grant was passed for the study, not funding for the project.
That's correct. That is funding for the study and the design that went to a consultant that you all have hired.
Okay, so we still have to go through the process of getting that on the actual project list?
Correct, but you'll have a study and a design to go off it, which is going to make that process a whole lot easier. All right, this is just a, a study, again, in the same, same realm. This allows your, your transportation staff and your planning staff to have some shelf-ready projects. This is the Route 1 project pipeline. This study is focusing on maintaining capacity along Route 1 and including the management of some overflow traffic due to incidents on 95. They're looking at crossovers, they're looking at anything and everything that will keep Route 1 flowing nicer through the, the corridor. They're currently working on schematics and cost estimates for smart scale applications. And there may be a, a one that is going to be ready for a potential smart scale application in the next round. I know that was one that was high, a high priority from Caroline County was Page Road. So there may be some additional, obviously, we put the, the warning flashers out there, but there may be some additional recommendations, left turn lanes, some things that I think we can all agree would, would be a nice addition to that intersection. And I, I want to say on that too, that is from Route 1, from county line to county line. So it is the entirety of Route 1 through Caroline County. Here we have our Route 2 over Bowie's Pond. If you've gone through that area, you've seen that we have the, obviously, the temporary signal. We've gotten a lot of feedback on where those stops are, those stops are in the optimal place, optimal location to make sure that the queue of traffic can get through. I know we've gotten a lot of concerns about site distance and things like that. We did look at that, it should be, it, I mean, it's, it's functioning okay. We had a little rough, a little bit out of the gate with the batteries dying. The sheriff beat me over the head on that one, but all is good, all is good now. So that one is a, the temporary traffic signal is in place and that is going to be going on until mid-April. They will be shifting sides here shortly and I will let you all know as that, as that comes up. This is another one and will probably be one of the last times. This slide is up here. This is the Farmer's Drive improvements, intersection improvements. We use SSYP, secondary six-year plan for this, that the traffic switched to the new configuration in mid-January and construction is now complete. We do have some drainage work that we're finishing up right there on the edge of the pavement. That's what you see kind of formed up there, kind of raising that drop inlet. But all intents and purposes, that project is complete. This is Route 680 Rattletrap Road. This is another secondary six-year plan prioritized project. It is a rural rustic, so it's taken the existing gravel road and hard surfacing it. We are on, we have finished the, a lot of the environmental work and sediment control plans at this point, just doing some last minute things with that. And then we're looking to go to construction this summer and have it hard surfaced with a tar and chip. Here we have just some traffic engineering items. Mr. Underwood, I know you, you and I had worked together, I've worked with, I met out with Chief Loftus and some of our folks from traffic engineering. We're finalizing some plans on some different signage, things that we're going to be doing for the, the loop there to try and improve some of the awareness, removing some of the guide signs, adding some guide signs, adding a stop sign. We're doing some different things out there to try and bring some awareness because some of the tractor trailers are paying Chief Loftus a visit and I know he doesn't like that. So we're trying to, to work through some of that and I'll carry on. Manicure mowing, so we are getting ready to start. It is the season, as you've noticed, some of the, the temperatures are changing for the better. I hope we're done with snow for the year, but we are, we do have the manicure mowing contract. I know that came up at the last meeting. I know Mr. Shebal is working with some of you all in relation to, to putting together a plan for some different corridors throughout. This is an option. We do have this as a, as an option for the manicure mowing. We can mow an additional eight to 10 times on select routes that we're out on contract. If we want to add routes, we can do that too at a per acre cost. I know he's working through some things to determine if this is the best option for you all, but it is on the table and it will remain on the table. I will add too, I heard a lot of comments about litter. I completely, I, I appreciate you all really tackling that from an educational standpoint. I'll just say this, you know, I'm a partner in this because at the end of the day, I have to pay for a lot of litter removal prior to our mowing services. So if I can cut down on that, that's a win for me. So I'll just say if you need a partner in this as you go forward, please, 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 just give me a call and let me know. We'll be happy to, to set up a kickoff day for, for the mowing season and pick up some trash. So I know, and another item that I do have on here before Mr. Black can say it, is I-95. You know, I know that came up at the last meeting. We are in the final stages of getting that contract mobilized. So within the next couple of weeks, they're going to start. They will have all of the interstate system in the Fredericksburg District completed by mid-April. So that is coming. I have seen the ramps, they are terrible, but the contractor is getting ready to mobilize. So moving on, some drainage work. As you know, in January, we had some significant rainstorms. Our crews are really focusing on our plan right now to improve some of our drainage out there. We have finished the project on Beverly Run that opened in early February. We do have to go back and resurface it, which is planned for this spring. As of now, it is gravel over the pipes that we replaced, but we will come back and put some asphalt over that in the spring. We have a list of drainage issues that we're going to go, be going back and, and working on throughout the year. These are just some, not, not flooding necessarily where you have tidal, but when you have blocked drainage pipes or ditching, those are the things that we're going to work on. This picture is a stock photo, it is not from any particular area. So getting good, I'm getting good at this, aren't I? All right, so here we have resurfacing routes. We talked about this last time. The one thing that did come up, Mr. Sealy, we had the chat about, I believe it was Route 630 Sparta Road, the section by the campground, which I believe is 721, is not within the limits. However, our area headquarters staff do have it on the plan this summer to come back and mill some of that out and smooth out that ride through the curves there. So that is on our plan this summer. But we have 96 lane miles in total. You will see us out there within the next month doing some patching. So what that is, is for some of the surface treatment routes, we are going to be going out and digging out certain areas on those routes and putting asphalt back with a least paver. That is not the final surface, so don't think that that's how we're going to leave it, but we are trying to get some of the base failures out so that when the surface treatment comes in, we have a nicer ride. So you will see us out there doing that. If you have any issues with that, just don't hesitate to drop me an email or give me a call. And that is it for me as far as the presentation goes. I did have a couple other items I just wanted to go over from the last meeting. Mr. Black, you had mentioned one, the I-95, I think I covered that. But additionally, you had the adopt a highway sign. We ended up getting that one repaired, the one that was on, I believe, 639 that was by the apartment complex there, that, that was corrected. You had mentioned the curb and gutter and the weeding, so I am going to work with Mr. Shebal. I know he's putting together a plan for 639 and regardless of what happens, I'll tell you that even if it's not the county, we're going to be going out this year on multiple occasions and, and spraying some of the curb and gutter throughout the brand new project. So that is coming. Mrs. Long, you, you know, I know this didn't come out, up in the last meeting, but I know you and Andrew had a conversation about Mount Road. We do have another issue with DWR. I'll just say that my staff is reaching out to them if they haven't already, set up another meeting out there. We did have luck with the new contact that we made with them, so we're hopeful that that will, that relationship will be fruitful in finding a, a solution out there.
Right. Like I said, I don't, that was a problem caused by somebody else, so go get them.
Still my road.
Still your road, so go get them. Also, make sure you have on your list Mudville Road.
Mudville.
I've talked to Andrew about that one.
Okay.
To get that taken in eventually.
Okay.
I think he's doing research on it. Thank you.
Will do. Yeah, Mr. Sealy, we talked about Sparta Road, the wash boarding. We are going to correct that this summer. Mr. Underwood, you had mentioned Mount Gideon Road, Route 651. They have started doing some work on the trees in the last couple of weeks, removing a lot of that. They have a lot of drainage work to get to, that's on their list. That is one that they're probably looking at, at the late spring, early summer is the timeframe that they've given me to get that done. They are going to be working hard on the, the patching for the surface treatment route, so we are having to pull off of some other things. But we will get back, get back out there. Just because we pull off doesn't mean we're not coming back for the drainage issues. So that will be corrected. And then Mr. Forehand, you had mentioned the off ramp on the northbound side. We did get some of those potholes patched, was exactly what I said last time, a lot of reflective cracking coming up from the concrete. The good news is, I talked to our pavement team, that ramp is on the 2025 schedule, meaning that next, next summer around that time, somewhere between the spring and fall, I should say, that ramp is one that we are submitting to be resurfaced. So along with all the other ramps, Lady Smith Road. That was all the updates I had. I can take any questions if you have anything additional for me.
Mr. Black? Thank you, Mr. Bates, for all you guys do. I do see a lot of work being done, which we appreciate. I do have one concern is Route 30 heading east off of, toward King, King William. I think we need something to reduce the speed there still. I'm still concerned about the traffic speed.
Okay.
I think it's 55 in a very short period of time once you leave 30, once you leave 301, make the right turn going to King William up to Route 30. That's just, it's just too fast. Traffic is hauling. So, you know, so when you come over the hill from, on Route 30 from the state fair, heading down to 301, I mean, that's 55, I believe.
Yep.
Which is, is hard for people to get in and out. And then once they get to the stoplight and they're either coming or going, traffic for those citizens is just really, really difficult.
Are we talking about on the other side of the stoplight, like east of the stoplight, going towards the county line?
Yes.
Okay.
Going toward the county line.
Gotcha. Let me take a look at it. And not a whole lot of development or anything has happened out that way that's changed, has it?
No.
Off the top of my head.
It's still, it's always been a problem. Constant complaint and I think we did a traffic study a year, a few years ago, I thought.
I know we did one when I first got back and we ended up moving one of the zones where some of the, where the Family Dollar and some of that stuff.
Right.
Cover, cover some of the development and the entrances and things like that. So let me take a look at that. I don't know if we covered that section when we did it. If not, I'll look at what the last time was that we did that study and see what that says before I do anything else and I'll, I'll follow up.
Anything we can do, I appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Sealy?
I'm good at this time. Thank you, Mr. Bates, for...
Mr. Forehand? Mr. Bates, one thing regarding the 639, heading east in the right lane, there, I think, needs to be a sign that says right. There, I think, needs to be a sign that says right turn, must turn right as you're approaching Interstate 95. Because the arrow is only about 75 feet from where the lane stops. So if you're cruising along at 40-ish in that lane, thinking that you're going to cross the bridge, there's a car in front of you, you really don't have any time to realize that that lane ends and you got to take a right or you got to quickly merge.
Sure.
That's the only thing. Everything else looks beautiful.
I can, I can see that. Let me, let me take a look at it.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Thomas. Is that it, Mr. Forehand?
That's it.
Mr. Bates, which one is, I guess, better? Plant mix or surface treatment on your resurfacing schedule?
Well, I would say it depends what better means. Plant mix is what you think of with black asphalt, but it's it's a much more expensive. You get a whole lot less lane miles. I'll say that.
So that's.
So it really depends on the volume of traffic. It depends on the weight of traffic. So, you know.
And then surface treatment is?
Surface treatment is a tar, essentially a tar and chip that goes down. Oh, it's it's a fraction of the cost. Yes, sir.
And these are, these are prioritized by VDOT or the board prioritize these?
Those are prioritized by VDOT. We do that based off of ratings. We do that based off of volume of traffic. We have a formula that we go through every year.
So if there's a concern about it, we should go directly to you?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
All right. I have a few. Is there a way, just out of curiosity, that we can do somehow, just on the ramps to 95, we can do an adopt a highway? I know you're going federal. I understand we're starting to, I understand we're getting into federal. But the fact of the matter is, is they are not, some of the roads that we're covering, like Lady Smith Road, where when we're doing an adopt a highway, there's no shoulder there and people are coming 45, 55 miles. I would feel much more safe on a ramp on 95 than I would in the narrow area of Lady Smith Road when people are at speed. Because on the ramps, people are either decelerating or accelerating and they're not going to be going at speed of 55. And you have plenty of shoulder going on to the, I mean, it looks awful. And to say we're, oh, we do it two times a year. It, it, that, you know, people coming off our exit, you know, that's the first thing they see and it's an embarrassment. So even if it's not the county doing it, even if it's not you doing it, if there's volunteers that want to do that, it just doesn't make sense that, why people couldn't go out and, because I've had multiple people and say, I'd rather do the ramps on 95 than I would, you know, on Lady Smith Road.
Sure.
Because everyone's seeing that.
So I, hey, let me do some, some additional research, Mr. Black. I cannot approve a permit for interstate ramp. That is not something I can do in-house. There's, there's a very specific way that that has to go because it is.
Do I need to go, do we need to go to Congress or do we need to go as member?
You let me figure that out first. And if, I'm going to get the answer either way. Whether it's a yes or a no. If it's a yes, I can tell you how it's done. If it's a no, I'll let you write whatever you need to write. But let me, let me do some digging first. There may be a world where we can, if I can figure out what the process is, maybe there's a world where we can adopt it from a county's standpoint and we'll, we'll talk, we'll talk more.
Okay. The second thing is, and I don't know if Mr. Forehand has mentioned this before, when you're, I'm getting off at Exit 110 and there's a yield sign there rather than a stop sign. And I don't, I'm coming off the highway onto, I mean, it just doesn't seem to, a lot of people complain about that. That seems to be more dangerous than actually having a stop sign looking. Because some of the cars are just coming right off this. So if traffic, if the traffic is east of 95 or west of, yeah, east of 95 and they're coming to the new project in Lady Smith Road and someone's yielding, a lot of people are just getting off 95 and zooming. And I don't know if it, would it be better? Because we had a stop sign there beforehand and now you've moved it to a yield sign. So I'm just kind of curious.
As long as they're yielding, it shouldn't be a problem.
Well, true.
But.
But I mean, yeah, as long as they're yielding, you know, like, I mean, a stop sign would be, I have to come to a full stop.
You know, what would have, would have been a better solution is just to make that a right turn. New lane starts with that lane.
Right, right.
That way you.
Right.
I don't know about them.
But we're, yeah.
They might have trouble, trouble with that somewhere else. They didn't include that, but.
Yep. So.
Let me, I can take a look at that. I'm going to see if there, if we, do we have any, any crash data? And I'm not implying that we're, we're waiting for crashes to happen. But if I don't have a problem and people are flowing, do we want to slow them down getting off the interstate if we don't have to?
Yeah.
It's, we're weighing safety in operation, obviously. So.
Well, I will say this. I mean, just not that I'm complaining about it, but if you're, the other thing too is with that new project, if you're going west through Route 1, going towards like what Lotus Academy is and so forth, but I'm, I'm on the intersection, you have the two lanes, they'll merge. It becomes a drag race. The people are laughing about it. If I'm in the, I'm in the, you know, the left lane, the, the, you want to move, you know, they're, they're trying to accelerate so they can cut ahead in front of the person in the right lane. Because the right lane is the one that goes straight, you know, down to the, it's the one, when it comes down to a one lane road.
Sure.
On Lady Smith Road, the people on the left lane, they're, you hitting the gas so they can get in front of you.
You're supposed to change human nature, Mr. Bates.
Yeah.
I can work on it.
Yeah. So it's becoming the Ladies with Drag, you know, strip in a way. So I just want to let you know that. The other thing too is I had mentioned to you at the last meeting, the intersection of Lady Smith, Anderson Mill Road and Charlesburg Road. And we had talked because it was dangerous because it was, it was the terrain there. You know, just, it's hard to see if I'm at that stop sign on Charlesburg Road, it's hard to see a car coming. You know, basically southbound just because of the hill. So you can't see this. There could be a car below and you don't see it. And they're going relatively fast. So I don't know if you've taken a look at that.
Yeah, it's a, it's a vertical curve. It's one that we're going to have to, we would have to tear that down. It would be a pretty significant project and something we probably would need to look at secondary six-year plan for, which I'm not saying that that cannot happen. But we probably want to lean on the transportation committee to see if, what that, where that ranks. It's not maintenance when you start talking about taking a foot of road away. You're talking about full on construction.
Just keep me posted on that. And the last thing, I'm sure for all supervisors in here, you had just given us the schedule for the, or you just told us what was going to be resurfaced. Can you just, I did not see on there, maybe I missed it, when the resurfacing is actually going to take place? So when you're doing Lady Smith Road, for example, or CCC Road, can you say, hey, look, send us an email, we're going to be starting resurfacing in the next week, two weeks?
I would say the best way to handle that is keep an eye on the VDOT hotspots. So we come out every week with, you know, what, what's going to happen over the next couple of weeks. If you follow us on our social media accounts, there are a lot of routes out there. And we don't actually dictate to these contractors their order of operation. So they have to let us know two weeks ahead of time. That's, VDOT finds out at that same time. Now, I have, I know the routes, I know where they're going. I have a, a rough understanding of where they're going to go, but they can change that at any given time. But they just have to let us know two weeks out. So I, I would say the, the best way to handle that is to keep an eye on the, on the VDOT hotspots because our, our communications team does a fantastic job at pumping that stuff out there. And that's not just resurfacing, that's maintenance activities as well.
Okay.
If there's a specific route you're looking for, I heard Lady Smith Road, I can, I can work with the contractor and see if I can get a good understanding. I don't want to have to do that for every single route in all three of my counties. But yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir. All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
All right. Our next item on the agenda is appointments. I do have one for the Western Carolina Transportation. So it is Becky Golden. So if I could get a second. I have a motion and a second for Becky Golden for the Transportation Committee. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion carries. Chesapeake Bay Erosion and Sediment EMS Control Program Administrator.
Mr. Chair, I would move that we, oh, okay. Go right ahead. I was just going to put them right out there. I've already met them. So.
I know. I, I appreciate that, but I just wanted to take a moment to introduce you all to Walker Sledge. So you all will be able to put a face with a name and a person to contact. He's our new Senior Environmental Planner and handling, handling our Chesapeake Bay EMS program. So I just wanted you all to meet him face to face. So.
Thank you. Welcome.
Welcome, Walker. And with that said, I am going to motion that our Chesapeake Bay Erosion Sediment Control Program Administrator, because I hear you just got all certified.
All right. I have a motion. Do I have, we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Yep.
A motion and second and discussion of the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Consent agenda. Is there anything that needs to be pulled? If, if there isn't, I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Approve this chairman.
All right. Motion and a second and discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion carries. All right. We are going to go now to take a, we'll take about a 15 to 20 minute recess. And we will be back around 7:40-ish. So we are now on our break. So, uh, we are now on our, uh, break. Okay. Mr. Forehand?
Yeah.
Sweet. All right. I'm gonna go ahead and call the, uh, March twelfth Board Supervisors Meeting back to order. Um, we are now at the, uh, public comment period of our meeting. Uh, sorry, we're a little bit, about ten minutes behind. Uh, the public comment, uh, portion of the meeting is, you can talk about anything, you have three minutes. Um, and as long as it's not a public hearing, uh, we have something, uh, our own public hearing that's coming up after that. So, anyone who wants to talk about anything that is not a public hearing, uh, you may, if you have any concerns with something. So I'll now open the public comment, uh, portion. Anyone who would like to come down and speak regarding anything that is not a public hearing. Again. Just state your name and your voting district, I don't need an address.
Uh, good evening, my name is Travis Richardson. Um, I am the Assistant Girls Basketball Coach at Caroline High School, also the Director for Team Loaded Girls Basketball, and founder of Athletes for Awareness.
Hi, I'm Caleb Beany. Um, so I'm a student athlete at Caroline High School. I play volleyball, basketball, and I'm currently running track.
Um, I just wanted to come, um, and present, uh, the Board of Supervisors with, um, the Athletes for Awareness Sponsorship Award for, um, y'all contributions to Team Loaded and Athletes for Awareness, and to this young lady. Um, y'all helped her travel to, uh, Nebraska last year with your contribution. Um, and she got to play in front of a lot of college recruiters, um, played against some, um, national talent and everything. And I wanted to present y'all with an award and some certificates and everything, just for y'all contribution, could be really appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you. Mister, uh...
Did you have a good trip, and did you meet a lot of interesting people?
Yeah, I was a lot of colleges, college coaches there. Was kinda nervous, but...
Well, you'll do great, somebody's gonna give you...
Thank you.
You're gonna get an envelope for the mail, I'm sure.
What track event do you run?
Um, I do the three hundred hurdles, one hundred hurdles, and I'm on the four by one.
Three hundred hurdles?
Yeah.
Wow. That's, that's a tough race.
Yeah, it is.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, yeah, all right.
Yeah, about a thousand years ago, I ran the hundred and ten meter, or hundred and ten yard hurdles, that's how long ago it was.
Do, do you wanna come up and we'll get a, if you wanna come up, we'll get a picture?
Yes.
Perfect, come on up.
And Coach, Coach Travis is from the Mattupanah District.
That's all.
Yeah. Oh, I got an award too, I didn't mean to give you.
Yard hurdles, one more count, it's a hard race.
Yes.
You were hurt.
I'd be dead. Three hundred yards.
Hey, Coach. Coach, just one more thing, uh, you said you were at the girls, you're the girls' basketball coach or assistant?
Yeah.
Uh, I had a chance to see you guys play at Culpeper. When you guys, when the, the lady for the other got the, the, the points, the thousand points.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I will say this, I, when I went into that gym, I thought, man, this might not be close, and you guys made it, you guys fought like crazy. You guys did a great job, even though you didn't win the game, I just wanna say, you guys did a heck of a job staying close with that team, that was really impressive, so, thank you.
Thank you much, and, you know, it's, it was a pleasure coaching the girls this year, just getting the coaching job like late, right before the week, or the season starting and everything, so the girls came together, they bought into, you know, to the process and everything, and we ended the season very good. We went to the, made it to the second round of the regional tournament.
Yep.
Uh, we came up short, so we're just looking to, you know, build on that and, you know, try to make it to state, win the district first, and then try to make it to states next year, I think we got a very good chance.
Well, yeah, you, I appreciate your passion. There was a couple calls in that, I was, didn't even understand what was happening, but I appreciate your passion for the game.
Yeah, no problem, no problem.
Thank you.
Thank y'all again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh, anyone else have any, uh, questions or comments?
Yes, thank you, board members. My name is William Gordon, I live in Mattupanah Voting District. But I'm here representing the Reed Church Rooting Club, which is also in the Mattupanah District. We kinda got, uh, I think we were kinda the guinea pigs on the new special event permit. Uh, we're just a small civic organization, we're struggling to stay afloat, and we had to write a check for two hundred and fifty dollars. We can't afford it.
Right.
And, uh, I'm just, uh, asking, can you waive the fee? And, and really, in, in future, cause like I say, we don't profit for anything, we, we give it all right back to the local community. If we gotta do this every time, we just, we can't stay afloat.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes. What's that? Yeah, it is on the, it is on our agenda for tonight. And sir, I'm also a Ruritan as well, and a Ladysmith Ruritan, so I, I, I appreciate where you're coming from. Uh, let's see, is there anyone else who would like to make, uh, comment regarding anything that is not a public hearing? Last call, is there anyone who would like to make a comment that is not a public hearing? Seeing there's no other comments, I will close our public comments, and we are now to public hearings. Uh, Mr. Hughes, I think you are going to be the one who takes this.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Uh, this is a request for a special exception to allow a childcare facility pursuant Article Nine, Section Three, Period Nine of the Caroline County zoning warrants. The proposed facility, excuse me, will be located at two, three, seven, nine, five Rogers Clark Boulevard, identified as tax parcel eighty-two A dash one twenty-five A, outlined in orange on the south side of Route Two-O-Seven, approximately nine hundred and fifty feet west of the Rutherg Lynn Route Two-O-Seven intersection. The commercial retail area is, currently has a gas station, convenience store, and donut shop adjacent to the west, and a McDonald's adjacent to the east. There is a shared access, uh, to the parcel identified in blue, uh, here off of Route Two-O-Seven. excuse me, that serves this proposed facility and the neighboring convenience store. There is also an inner parcel connection identified in blue here between the McDonald's in front of the site over to the convenience store. And there is also an inner parcel connection and travelway from Rutherglen Road here that runs behind the facility over to the McDonald's. The, on the yellow area highlighted here is an area that the applicant can contract for additional parking in the future if it is needed. The green area within the parcel boundary here is an area that would be fenced for, as a play area for the children. This view is of the shared entrance and the parking lot. As noted, the facility would use the shared access point on 207 right here. This view is looking west on Route 207 on the southbound side. This is a bottom view here, is looking from the steps of the facility through the parking lot back towards Route 207. Pickup and drop off, drop off would be staggered with the, with a peak two hour period in the morning based on parental needs, and the site can accommodate approximately 10 spaces in the identified parking area there. You see, it's not striped now, but it could be striped to accommodate 10 spaces at the county's space requirements. Excuse me. Vida, I did raise some concerns about queuing, and that queuing should not impede any, any turning traffic movements from Route 207 into either the daycare facility or the Exxon Station. And as I noted, should the parking be full, this travelway here that is identified, this is the travelway that's in front of the facility, this is a 24 foot wide travelway. For, for some reason that the parking lot was full, then you could potentially have cars who could park in this area here and not fully impede that travelway. So you wouldn't have a, a blocked travelway there, if for some reason it didn't happen. There is a condition that is proposed that the parking, in the parking lot would be limited to 15 minutes to help, you know, minimize the opportunity for there to be backups on the site. This view is also from the front steps, looking towards 207, looking into the site and looking into the site. The structure was previously a used car dealership. There are utilities and parking available as noted. The only planned changes to the exterior of the building are the addition of the fencing in the rear. As noted, the parking lot was previously striped with six spaces, but there is space to accommodate 10. And the applicant has confirmed with the owners of the neighboring McDonald's that spaces are available for rent should they need them. This is the rear of the facility, and it shows the approximately 2,400 area, grass area that will be fenced. The Department of Education requires a 75 foot square foot play area for the children. And this fenced area, when you add the playground equipment, could accommodate about 10 children based on the DOE calculations. So the Department of Education does have calculations that would determine, based on the square footage of the interior and the fenced play area, that will determine the number of children that can occupy the daycare and be allowed in the outside play area at any one time. The applicant has indicated they plan to start with 10 children, which may expand to 30. That number could fluctuate up or down depending on the calculations of DOE. Once they do the interior renovations, the DOE will come out and inspect the property and then make a determination on what the total capacity could be. The use is consistent with the comprehensive plan, and it introduces a neighborhood commercial use to this segment of the corridor. Currently, there's a daycare operation on the western end of the corridor at the intersection of Route 1 and 207. And as noted, the childcare facility is allowed with approval of a special exception. At the January 24, 2024 Planning Commission meeting, the commissioners discussed safety and reviewed records from the Sheriff's Office regarding incidents in the vicinity of the proposed facility. The Sheriff's Office records did not show any incidents in the last three years. The Planning Commission did add conditions six and seven. And you will note when you see the condition screen that condition six is blacklined out because the DOE has regulations that require parents to take the children into the facility at drop off and then go in and pick them up at pickup. So we struck that condition from the proposed conditions, but left it there as it was a recommendation of the, the Planning Commission. Condition seven, the commission added, which is a requirement that the rear yard fencing be vinyl or PVC materials. And because of maintenance and durability concerns, the applicant prefers to use wood for the fence. And, we'll speak to this during her presentation. Staff did receive one letter of opposition that expressed concerns about safety of a daycare facility in this area. The Planning Commission did vote 6-0 to recommend approval of the request. And as noted, these are the proposed conditions. Number one is that the applicant would file a two wit upon approval. The childcare facility shall comply with all county, state, and federal Department of Education standards and licensing for a childcare facility. Pickup and drop off of clients shall not impede the flow of traffic in the commercial retail center. Any fencing shall not block the sightlines of the rear travelway or intersections within the commercial retail center. Parking should be labeled with 15 minute parking signs. And as I said, six was, is unenforceable by county, by county staff. And then seven, the Planning Commission recommended that the fencing be constructed of vinyl or PVC materials. And these are the recommended conditions should the board deem this application worthy of approval. So this concludes my presentation, the applicant as president has a, a presentation as well, and I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Does anyone have any questions from Mister Hughes at this time? The, the public hearing? If not, I'm gonna go ahead and, if no one has any questions, I'm gonna go ahead and open a public hearing on SPX 08, 2023, Elliott Enterprises and Company, Cynthia, Cynthia Claire, Berry Fun Daycare. Okay, public hearing is now open.
The applicant.
If the applicant would like to come down and address the board?
Good evening. So the main thing was, I know that we had talked about doing like a round pickup and drop off for children, and the teachers could come out and grab the kids, make it quicker. With state licensing, they want you to sign kids in, sign kids out. And then there was a liability about putting children in the car seats because they're younger than school age. Where school age, you could throw them in, they could buckle up and away they go. So, with that in mind, what we decided to do was, when the children come into the facility, instead of the parent taking the time, walking the children back to the classroom and saying their goodbye for who knows how long, we would have them do it right at the receptionist desk, they sign them in, and there's someone right there, give mommy and daddy kiss goodbye, and we will take them and deliver them in the classroom. This should make it super quick. That way, it's not even gonna be a 15 minute parking, so there should never be a time where that parking lot is full. The other thing is no one goes to work at the same time, so the staggered of that, that's not gonna be a problem either. I've been doing this for over 30 years. I've never had a problem where everybody's there at the same time to pick up or drop off. So that shouldn't be a problem. The fencing, I looked at all kinds of poses and cons per se for PVC and wood. And PVC, the one main thing they have with vinyl is if you're in a very hot and cold area, and then you add pressure to it, it will crack quickly. And where children are playing with the ball, or falling into it, or something falls into it, I'm afraid it's gonna crack, whereas a wood fence is not going to. I've talked with DSS, and they said as long as it's wood and it's basically built backwards, so basically your poles are on the outside and your wood is on the inside, so it's smooth. They don't have a problem with wood, it will be safe for them. So it's up to your guys' vote which way you guys want that to go. I personally feel wood's safer with the weather, that's your guys' boat, I guess. Do you have any questions for me?
Does anyone have any questions?
What ages are you doing?
I am doing zero to age 13. Now, zero being infants, I only have four spots for infants because the infant ratio is four babies per one adult. The only reason I took infants is because every family has more than one kid, and sometimes that family's gonna be an infant. And that's the only reason I even did infants, because they require the most space.
So what I think I'll do is, what I'll have do is, I'm gonna, the public hearing's still open, so I think what I'll do is have you have a seat, and then see if anyone else wants to talk for or against it. And then I will bring you back down for, for questions once I close, close the public hearing, okay? Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to talk on this public hearing? Is there anyone else who would like to talk on this public hearing?
Board of Supervisors, my name is Graham Redfern. I am a Caroline County resident.
Can you raise the, and just say you're voting, you're voting precinct?
Yes, sir, I, I live on Rutherglen.
No, you don't need to say the address, just tell me where you, like you're, like are you Mattupanai, what district are you?
Reed Church.
Reed Church, okay, thank you.
My name is Graham Redfern. I live on Rutherglen Road and I own a business in Carmel Church. I'm having a really hard time understanding how this is a safe place for a daycare. And I, I'd sent quite a few letters and had talked to the Planning Commission without any really answers, and I wasn't able to speak at the Planning Commission. And I, I wanna look at this as a common sense way. If the board doesn't have any questions, I'd like to present some. Fencing is a big thing, but fencing's never gonna stop an 18 wheeler from running through the back of it. And there's 24 hour 18 wheeling parking right behind this building. There's constant homelessness around the area, which is another problem in itself. But the area is not, when you look between McDonald's and Exxon, the, the thruway that I just saw a picture of, that would, you'd stop, drop your kids off, there's no way that you can have that as being a safe spot for a parent to stop their car, open their car up, let their kids out, because there are people that are constantly driving through there, and it's two ways. So on, on the parking side, I was told during the public hearing, well, during the Planning Commission, that when you drop kids off at this daycare, the, you're not gonna drop them off behind it, you're not gonna drop them off beside it, you're gonna drop them off in front of it, and it would be a U-turn around it. And that there would not be, need to be any construction to make the U-turn in the parking lot without making a three point turn. It's not possible in a truck, and it's not gonna be possible when you have cars parked in the parking lot. And so there's another concern. The biggest thing is when it comes to the safety of our community, obviously, we all need childcare. It's, it's something, as this area is growing, it's, it's something that's just gonna have to happen. But when you put the safety of 10 kids, when there's multiple areas and multiple buildings, and they're always opening up for more kids, this spot is not the one.
Sir, you got cut off, you were three minutes up, can you just wrap it up?
Yeah, not a problem. The turnaround's not possible. Parking is not gonna be possible while you're dropping kids off. If the moms have to walk into the building, then there will be a line that backs up, and so the through traffic will not go through. And then where would the employee parking be, not sure. There's a lot of questions that need to be answered before this is actually getting approved. So I appreciate your time, and thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to talk on this particular?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board. My name is Bob Schwartz, and I am a proud member of the Bowling Green District. I would like to say that prior to tonight, I have not spoken more than five words to Mrs. Claire. So I, excuse me, I have no dog in this fight. But I want you to know that we did examine this pretty extensively. What you cannot see from the photos is that where this building is, is slightly elevated, and it is curved all the way around. Now, I have personally sat at this site for several hours. Now admittedly, I am not getting up at 4:30 in the morning to be there at 7:00 to watch the very peak, but I can tell you that the interconnect road that goes in front of this building, I'm just glad I don't have a toll booth set up and depend on it to be fed because I would die of starvation for the number of vehicles that go up and down that road. You could count them on one hand. As for tractor and trailers going through the parking lot to the rear, no. Now, I don't mean to take Mister Redfern's task, but I have a copy of the letter that he wrote. He mentioned an accident where a vehicle crashed into a building. We don't know whether that was a vehicle that was left in park and it jumped out of gear, it hit the front of the building, but certainly the business did not close because a vehicle hit the building. I think that there is very little chance of a vehicle hitting this building. Mrs. Claire has been over backwards to conform to everything that was required of her. There was a question that came up, and I will say pertaining to what has been described as the world's oldest profession in drugs at the truck stops. That's why I requested from the Sheriff's Office an analysis. They went through all three truck stops for three years. There were no incidents involving moral turpitude or drugs. Now, that's not saying it doesn't exist because it exists worldwide. But I have seen drug deals go down in McDonald's parking lot. So, I, I think maybe Mister Redfern, who has a business nine tenths of a mile from this location, he may have some concerns that in the future, a daycare, daycare center.
Mister Schwartz, if you could just wrap it up, thank you.
Yes, sir. We'll do it very quickly. He may have some concerns that his business will conflict, or the daycare center will conflict with his business. He's right now doing a legitimate lawful business, I'll give him that. But I, I think you need to look at the motives of why he's opposed. This is something that Mrs. Claire should be given every opportunity to make happen for a needed service. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak concerning this matter? Is there anyone else who would like to speak regarding this matter? If not, I will close the public hearing, public hearing is now closed, board members. If you have questions, I will start with, Mister, do you want me to start with you, or because you'd like to go last, okay. Mister, Mister Sealy?
The ages are gonna be newborn to 13, which means the school bus is gonna have to eventually be involved in daycare. And my primary concern comes with bringing a school bus in and out of there at that location. Has anybody talked about that? Cause if you've got daycare during school hours, you're gonna have to have a school bus come. you've got daycare during school hours, you're going to have to have a school bus come there. And I'm going to tell you, that's not the most hospital spot, hospitable spot for a school. You can come up and answer questions. And my primary concern comes at eight, nine o'clock with, where that is peak time for, for a school bus is also peak time for all the other traffic that's going on there.
Yeah. So I own a fifteen passenger van and we plan on doing our own drop off and pickup.
Yeah, but you could have two different elementary schools and a middle school.
I'm only taking, again, this is a very small business.
Right.
So I'm only taking a certain amount of schoolagers during the school season. My main schoolagers will be during like a summer camp. That's it. So during the school season, I'm only taking a very few schoolagers and it will be from one school district and we will be doing our own drop off and pickup.
Okay.
Mrs. Long?
Have you looked at other facilities?
Five years I have. I came very close to getting one, but unfortunately in this area, it's very limited. I came close to getting one, but because it was on septic, it wouldn't support the amount of kids I wanted.
And have you ever contacted economic development here in the county with your needs to see if they could keep an eye out and look for?
I went through two real estate properties and I actually found this one on my own.
You do know the, the county has an economic, economic development office which helps businesses get started in five places?
I did not know that.
So that might also be something.
Yeah, I'm in a five-year lease now. I've had this place for a year trying to get these permits pushed through.
That was my only question. Thank you.
Miss, Mr. Forehand? Oh, I'm sorry. Well, Mr. Thomas.
Mrs. Claire, you just said you're in a five-year lease.
I am.
At this particular facility?
Yep. Unfortunately, I have to work with doing daycare, you have to work backwards. You have to get the place and then get all the permits.
So you're bound to keep that five-year lease?
I have to do something with it.
That seems a bit unfair.
It's very unfair because the meantime, I'm paying for it.
Okay. And, and as Mrs. Long said, you, you were not aware that the county has an economic development office and
Nope.
Could help you find a location?
Nope. And I've been, I've been through the commissioner's office once before, trying to get, paid the money, everything about four years ago before, maybe longer than that. It was before COVID. Tried to get a place on Route One.
Okay. And, and I understand and appreciate your, you know, desire to run this business. It's
Yeah.
Needed. Mr. Wilson is the gentleman in the back with the suit on and the gray hair. He's the economic development director. You may want to talk to him at some point in time just to make sure.
Yeah. I would definitely like to do more.
Okay. That's all I have. Now, you've run a daycare business before?
I've in home only for over thirty years.
Okay.
This has always been my passion to open a commercial. And like I said, this isn't my only commercial I want to open. So in the future, yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
This was my start.
Mr. Forehand? I might have been answered by, but, okay, I will, Mr. Underwood, I'll let you go last. I'm going to go. Ms. Claire, did you, did you have a business before inside Lake Landor?
I did, yes.
Was that permitted by the HOA?
Absolutely it was. Yes. It was permitted by the HOA and by the state. I have to have approval through the HOA to get approval through the state. I had permission from Ball.
Okay. Did you at any time have any, was there any issues with anything regarding the business at all?
No. The only thing was I had to keep my people that were, I had to pertain to people inside, so not bring people from the outside to the inside.
So it was, it had to be all people inside Lake Landor or?
Yes.
And how many were you?
Lake Landor and Heritage.
And, yeah, okay. So, yeah, like the, the HOA. So how many were you?
I was allowed to have twelve, twelve children.
My only, my only question with that though is like, and how big was the house?
The house was twenty-four, almost about twenty-six hundred square feet, but commercial is different from in-home. The standards are different.
Right. Well, and the standards are different. I'm saying from the building, like when I get a house in Lake Landor, for example, when I buy a house and if you're on the lake, are you on the Landor side?
I was on the Landor side.
So like when I get a, you know, when I get a permit for my home, it's rated for, like the septic is rated for, I can have X amount of people in my home.
Right.
So like for me, I think it's like, I'm allowed to have four people. And you said you had, there were twelve people there at times.
Yeah. My husband was on the road. It was only me.
Right.
During the weekdays.
Right. Did you have an issue with the septic? Did you have an issue with the septic?
No, I did not have an issue with the septic. We had to redo the septic because of regular maintenance, but I did not have an issue with the septic. No.
Okay. Because, okay, the, our building official told me something different. So that there was, there was, so that's why I'm, that's why I'm wondering. Said that there was a septic concern there at one time?
We took care of it. It was leaking and we took care of it.
So there was a leak?
There was a leak and we took care of it. That was a regular maintenance issue though. The people before us had a problem too.
Okay.
And they didn't take care of it.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Underwood?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Claire?
Yes.
The traffic, have you been there during, during the?
Yeah, I've been there from early morning till very late at night, walked my dog by myself. That's what I was telling my father. Never once felt uncomfortable and I've never seen a homeless person. They may be there, but I've never seen one.
How many times have you been there? You say you've been there for a year?
I've been in that place for a year. So I've been in there doing different things, putting stuff up, putting stuff away, off and on, all kinds of times.
So you don't see the tractor trailers parked behind the McDonald's?
I saw one traffic trailer, one tractor trailer parked behind there over the weekend. I've never seen them during the weekday. They could, but I've never seen it.
You don't see the tractor, the mobile homes going from the Exxon to the McDonald's? The extra-large vehicles going from, from the front of this property? But you don't have any?
There's a sign out there that says you can't go that way. You have to go around the back. There's a big sign saying no tractor trailers and there's a sign right there.
Speaking of people using the pump at the Exxon, when they get gas and they make the right turn and go directly in front of this facility to the McDonald's, did you see that?
I did not. Nope. They could. I've never seen it. I've seen them park in my driveway on the weekend. But just regular cars. Because McDonald's gets full on the weekend.
No, McDonald's full every day. The, Mr. Reddick brought an issue up and I think it's unfair to say that he has an ulterior motive or suspect. I didn't like that comment by the gentleman, so I'm going to strike that from my head. But the ingress egress to this building is contingent upon Rutha Glen Road.
Right.
And two oh seven, correct?
Right. But the way my parking lot is, is it's way back in. I mean.
No ma'am, it's actually twenty-two feet.
Okay.
Twenty-two feet.
Okay.
Is where the road that people would park to go into that facility, twenty-two feet. In the back, there is a ingress egress. But I can tell you, I drive this road twenty, thirty times a day sometimes.
Yeah.
Going back and forth. And it's always extremely busy.
I've never seen it busy there, going back and forth. I'm telling you what I've seen.
Okay.
And I have not seen it busy there.
Okay.
Monday through Friday, early in the morning or late in the afternoon.
Okay. Maybe I'll call you and invite you down.
We'll sit and do tea.
Discuss with me if you will. You said that. Talk to me about securing the facility and the height of fencing, the level of fencing.
Yes.
The, the ability to keep people from entering
Absolutely.
Into the facility.
So the fence in the back, regardless, wood or vinyl, has to be six foot tall. The gate that goes out will be a fireman escape. So you only go out, you don't come in. There will be nobody entering from the back, period. You have to come in through the front door. The front doors will also be the same way. No one's getting in from the outside, only the push emergency to go out. There will be someone sitting at the front desk that will unlock to let the parents in in the morning. So there will be no one that can come into my facility.
So the parents will either come up two oh seven and ingress through the McDonald's parking lot or the Exxon parking lot? Is that correct?
Yes, preferably the Exxon. I will be, and I told the building commissioners, I think they are, the building, the people before you, I'm sorry, I'm not good with.
The planning commission?
Thank you. I told them I would have it in my contract that states which way they need to go.
Right.
But you just told me that that was one way in the front.
No, for tractor trailers. The tractor trailer said they can't come that way.
Large vehicles like mobile homes, fifth wheelers that are getting gas at the Exxon station.
Right.
And
Yeah, they can't enter that way.
Excuse me?
They can't enter that way. There's a sign says they can't enter that way. They have to go around through the back. There's, they have a sign posted there saying they can't enter that way.
There's a sign posted there, but there's no enforcement of that sign there.
Okay. I follow the rules.
That's the concern. My next question is, you say you'd infant to thirteen-year-old, correct?
Yes. And there's going to be very few of the, the schoolagers and only four of the infants.
So you don't see safety as an issue in this location?
No. I've, I've done this my whole life. If I thought this was a dangerous situation, you have McDonald's next door. If that's not a kid trap, I don't know what is. I mean, every parent in the world goes to McDonald's.
They're, they're in their vehicle. They're not letting.
No, they bring them out of the vehicle and take them inside for a sit-down eat.
For their own, okay. I do have some concerns about this being a daycare center. I don't think it's appropriate.
Okay.
I don't think it's the appropriate location. I do agree with the gentleman there. I think there is an issue of safety there. I don't think there's enough clearance for children and I don't think there's enough.
But Pink and Blue right down the street next to the pot farm can be up and running and they're on the main highway and they have to walk their kids across the yardway in the back to put them in the fenced yard. They're okay to go.
I'm not concerned about, I'm concerned about this here.
Okay.
Because I pass this every single day going home. I live on Rutha Glen Road also. This, the, the right turn, that is not a right turn for tractor trailers is an issue during the holidays. That is the busiest intersection, intersection probably in the county, particularly when ninety-five backs up and people get on three oh one going back to.
So how Pink and Blue get their permit then?
I, I'm not here to discuss that. I'm here to discuss this application and that's all I'm concerned with.
Okay.
And tell me what I think. I think it's unfair and I think the gentleman hit it right on the head with his letter and I agree 100%. It is not appropriate for a daycare center.
Okay.
That's my comments, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. How would the, is there anyone, anyone have any other questions? All right, then the chair.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to the board that we deny this request for special exception.
So I have a motion to deny. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to deny. All in favor of denial, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Is there anyone opposed? All right, motion carries six nothing to, six zero to deny. All right. Moving on to the next, next agenda item is, I think we are on to the school proposed amendments to the school operating budget and textbook fund.
Good evening, Chair Black, Vice Chair Long, and members of the board. I'm Marsha Stevens, Chief Financial or Chief Operation Officer at Caroline County Public Schools. We have two budget amendments tonight. The first one is, and I did put operating fund, it's actually special grant funds, according to the account numbers provided, for the Head Start Grant. It's carryover for the first year of the grant. When we were awarded the grant, the operations of the Head Start program was only in half. They were, only had half of the number of students in the program as they were eligible and we took it over mid year. So we had salaries left over in the grant for that first year. So we have requested carryover funding from the Office of Head Start and the School Board as of February fourteenth and requesting appropriation of two hundred and fifty-five thousand, fifty, two hundred and fifty-five thousand, fifty-four dollars and fifty-nine cents. This will go into the revenues of the special grant and the expenditures for Head Start. There is no local required contribution on these funds. It's carrying over that Head Start grant. The second one is budget amendment number three. It's textbooks. In effort to reverse the statewide downward trends in literacy outcomes, the Virginia Literacy Act requires all school divisions to implement high-quality evidence-based instructional programs aligned to the science of reading by the start of the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Divisions are required to implement one of the high-quality instructional programs included on the VDOE-approved Core Instructional Program Guide. So we're asking for approval to carry over six hundred and fifty thousand in the textbook fund that is currently there to make this adoption. It's a seven-year adoption of the Virginia Literacy Act curriculum for our English Language Arts. Is there any questions from the board on these two items?
Does the, does the board have any questions? Yeah, Mr. Thomas?
Yes, ma'am. If I could, just for, just for accounting purposes, the two fifty-five for Head Start will be subtracted from the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three budget and then put in the twenty-three, twenty-four budget.
On the federal, it is the physical year twenty-two federal Head Start Grant and we are asking it to go into twenty-four. It is left over for twenty-three, our physical year, Head Start physical year twenty-two into twenty-four for it to be spent.
Because they start on October first and we start July first?
Yes, sir.
So the budget, the school budget will be reduced in twenty-two by that much money?
These revenues and these expenditures will not actually hit until twenty-four. We don't receive the revenues until we actually expend them. So we're asking for the budget authority to be able to expend them to then receive the revenues. And you'll see that in for, for this physical year twenty-four, we will go back to our normal Head Start grant in our physical year twenty-five budget.
Okay. I, I don't, I don't have any problem with, with reallocating these funds. What I'm, what I'm trying to figure out is as we are in the budget process, when we look at your budget over the last five years, budget actual requested, where's this two fifty-five going to come from?
This is in the special grant fund. So you'll see a revenue and an expenditure for Head Start in the special grants. It's not in the operational budget.
Okay. So which year in the operational budget will this impact?
You'll see it in twenty-four if you all approve this.
And not in twenty-two?
And not in twenty-three, twenty-four, because we'll be spending it and receiving the revenues in twenty-four.
Okay. And the same with the six fifty is additional money?
Six fifty is additional money carrying over the fund balance of the textbook fund. The fund balance is greater than seven hundred and some thousand dollars. It's giving budget authority for us to make those purchases of those textbooks prior to six thirty.
Okay. And again, I'm, I'm trying to make sure your, your budget somewhere, some fiscal year is going to reduce and this money is going to show up as an increase.
You won't see it reducing. Our fund balance will go down for this one, for textbooks.
Your fund balance?
Yes, our fund balance will go down.
You have a fund balance?
We do in textbook fund.
Okay. I guess maybe we can explain this a little more. I'm not sure my question.
I'm not sure my question.
David.
It's Mr. Cully.
Welcome, Mr. Cully. Go for it.
Mr. Thomas.
I'm here.
We set up, we set up the textbook fund a number of years ago, so it does carry fund balance every year. So the state mandates what we put in locally and what they put in based on the ADM. And so that, if they don't spend that in any given year, that just builds up. And so it, it won't change their budget numbers. We budgeted the right amount in 22 and 23 and FY '24. They just have a fund balance and we did it that way years ago. So it didn't get lost in their operating fund. So that's what this textbook fund balance is for. So when they do an adoption, there's money there that's over what they would normally get.
Yeah, because this is a, a special fund. That, that part I understand, it gets to carry over, which again, I have no problem. I want to give you the money. I, I am just, when we make those little bar charts that said, this was your budget in 22, this was your budget in 23, where's this money going to come from? And you can, you can let us know or you can let me know between now and when we meet jointly, how that comes up. But trust me, I'm going to put together a budget sheet, what you had, what you spent, what you asked for. And I want to know where this money is going to come from and go to. If there's a fund balance for the book fund, I understand that, that's the way it works, no problem.
There is, and you will see your revenues increase and your expenditure increase. On the textbooks, you'll actually see your transfer increase for the fund balance.
Okay.
I do want to point out this is general assembly driven and is a state code of Virginia requirement by July 1, 2024. This is a go live regulatory requirement, which of course we're aiming to be fully compliant with. And so that textbook fund is funded the exact same way that Mr. Cully outlined through the average daily membership. And it is something that we include in our annual budget presentation to you as a light item.
I do have a question about.
Mr. Forehand? Is, is this software we're purchasing or access to a cloud system? I'm trying to.
Absolutely. When we say textbooks, we truly mean books in hand. Our kindergarten through fifth grade students will be receiving a wide array of classroom textbook sets in addition to leveled readers or decodable readers, excuse me, is the correct term now that we're moving towards the science of reading. It also outfits all of our classroom teachers with the teacher additions. Yes, there is an online component to that teacher addition, but this is not an online program. This is literally, a novice teacher can pick up the textbook manual that an educator would use to create lesson plans to ensure high quality instruction that covers all areas of literacy.
So we're actually buying books, workbooks, things like.
We are, and there will be consumables and we invite you. We, we right now are in a two week period where the community, the school board, parents and our staff are reviewing our two finalists. Those were announced and identified at the school board meeting last evening. We have identified HMH and Benchmark as our two finalists. So if you are interested in coming to review those at the school board office, please reach out to myself or Ms. Lisa Stevens and we will link you hip to hip with a reading specialist to review those materials. The goal would be to bring the finalists to the school board on April 9th.
I'm just happy there's something they can take home that's not a piece of paper.
And both of our finalists have those transferable resources. We're grateful, we're finding we need to strike a balance between online materials as well as tangible items.
Mr. Chairman, I could, I am so happy to hear that you're going to actually have young children touching, holding and falling in love with books.
Yes, ma'am.
And, and.
Kind of old school.
With their teacher. That's great.
Mr. Sealy.
But that's only first through third grade?
No, sir. This is kindergarten through fifth grade, so all of our elementary curriculum is aligned with science of reading. We've done extensive training and so all of our grades will be outfitted. And then it will ultimately transition into middle school, but that's a secondary aspect of the code.
Okay. Mr. Underwood.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Stevens and Dr. Calverick, I agree with what you're doing. My concern is, you talk about high quality instruction. You never give us a baseline of where we're starting. We've talked about spending money for, during the COVID years and we did tutoring and we did a number of programs. I think I've watched a school board meeting a couple of times and Dr. Monroe presented some numbers and some baseline. But I don't hear very much about the achievement of students. And I'm concerned particularly with Bowling Green. As you know, most of the kids from the Donary go to Bowling Green.
Yes, sir.
And the reading scores are atrocious. ELA numbers are atrocious. And I'd like to see a baseline so we can begin to just say, is this program effective? Is the instructional strategies that you're using for reading, are they effective? Cause we can implement all kinds of programs. We can say, we're going to put this, make this an academy, we're going to do, but I don't see the proof in the pudding. And I'd like to see something in the pudding.
Certainly, we can bring the pudding to you and present that to you at any time. Certainly if we are looking for impact data associated with this upcoming purchase, we would need to of course have our baseline in the fall and then our mid-year in the end. But we can give you a more of an autopsy view of our most recent historical data with no difficulty.
That's what I'm looking for. Just tell me what you're looking for out of this program that you're about to implement for our K-5 students across the board. What impact it's having here versus here? Do we need to make an adjustment here for this program for this group of students or this school? Cause I'm sure you do evaluations of each school and then each student as we go from micro to macro. So.
Absolutely.
Hoping that we can take a look at the effectiveness of spending money to ensure that the programs are effective for our students.
That is absolutely part of our plan. We are very data driven. We meet monthly with Bowling Green and CMS and we meet every other month with our other three schools to track that on a regular basis. So it's all very accessible. So we'll make sure we build in all of those aspects when we come back to present. You'll just need to let me know, maybe when we meet for a joint session on March 26th, we can outline a time that you would like to receive that additional information.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Calverick, I'm going to play off on that. Like the, so you're saying the, kind of what Mr. Forehand said, so these, the $650,000, that is, I mean, I'll be honest with you. When the kids get to the high school level history class, you can almost predict if a kid's got a great reading, you know, if they're, if they're a very good reader, they're going to be pretty much successful. They can analyze stuff, they can write essays, they can understand documents. And it's all based on, you know, their Lexile score and their reading ability. I mean, that's just the bottom line. So as someone who is a history teacher and really relies on the lower grades to get them, you know, where they need to be at their reading level, it's a big help. So this program that you're doing, there's a way that you, as Mr. Underwood said, there's a way you can track that.
Yes.
To see that, because for us at the upper level, it's very, very important that the kids come to us. I, I mean, I'll be honest with you, for a life skill, if a kid hasn't really had much history, up to the point they get to me. I'm kind of fine with that in the sense that, you know, I, I think they need to be reading because once you can read, everything, the world's yours. I, I think you understand that and with, and probably same thing with math. And so anything that can do to help a reading level, a reading level at a local level, I will support. But I do think if we're doing this, we need to see some sort of data where, hey, we bought this program and here we are and here we're going to. Because a lot of times schools say, we're doing this program, we're doing this program implementing. And then to tell you the truth, I'll be honest with you, like the, the reading levels that are coming to me, I don't think they're improving. You know, and, and it's just, we spend a lot more money, I understand that. But I don't think the reading levels of some of my students have improved over the last 10 or 15 years.
What I will share in response to that, Mr. Black, is that last evening at the school board meeting when we shared our presentation, one of the data points we discussed is that NAEP, the National Assessment for Educational Progress, is sharing with the Commonwealth that this is the first year that fourth grade students across the state of Virginia, their scores fell below the national average. And that is not a statistic any of us as educators or community members are proud of. And so we're doing our due diligence, not only with a very robust adoption process, but simultaneously we have a partnership with William &amp; Mary and have 11 teachers going through reading specialist training. They will come out with that master's or most postmaster's endorsement. So we'll have greater specialization in the building. We also have spent a large amount of all-in funds as well as ESSR funds to train all kindergarten through second grade in what is called letters. And that is direct instruction, explicit instruction associated with phonics, phonemic awareness, et cetera. So you have me on my soapbox. I could talk a blue streak about this, but I would be happy to come back with our specialists so that we can enlighten you with greater detail.
And then one, and one last thing, and then I'll, and then Mr. Underwood maybe has a point. For me is, one of the things Mr. Forehand had mentioned, and, and I, I agree is having that, that tactile thing to bring home is really important. I, I get it. But at the same time, is there any training going on with like, I mean, as far as, because if that, that textbook goes home with a younger kid and the parent's not doing anything with them, then it's probably no good. I mean, the teacher can only go, the teacher can't follow the kid home. So if the teacher wants the kid reading at home, I mean, is there something that is going on with? And I know this is, schools, I, I get it. Schools are becoming much, much more responsible for stuff that we never were responsible before. I, I completely understand that. But is there something that is done when that textbook goes home? Is there a way that the parent, you know, we're encouraging parents like, hey, you know, I, I don't know what the answer is, but I would think that if parents reading and with the kids would be a big, big help.
Absolutely. Both the consumables from both companies have a homeschool connection that the parent will be able to readily pick up and support their child in engaging with. Additionally, we are utilizing our website right now. There's a parent resource corner that's helping educate our families on the ever evolving changes that are coming out with science of reading in the VLA Act. And we've done a number of reading family nights and we will continue to do that. We also have SEAC, our Special Education Advisory Committee intimately involved. Because if you look at our data, Mr. Underwood, our special education students are underperforming. And science of reading is really going to provide them with additional support that will help them become more competent in those areas that will allow them to read, to understand versus learning to read.
Okay, thank you. Oh, Mr. Underwood, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, could you send me the name of those two companies?
Absolutely.
And available times to take a look at that curriculum?
And they are also at every elementary school. So if the school near you at the elementary level is more convenient, we can meet you there versus the school board office. So we will email you and provide that. And I will do that for the whole board if there's collective interest.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. How would the board like to?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the amendments to the fiscal year budget for the schools.
Second.
A motion and second, is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries unanimously, six nothing. All right, we are moving on to the next item on our list is the first reading of text amendment 01, 2024 and text amendment 02, 2024 to amend the articles basically permitted uses in a planned shopping center. Mr. Hughes.
Yes, Mr. Chair, as you know, this is the first reading of a proposed text amendment, one to create a definition for automated car wash. And then also to amend the permitted uses in the PSC district to allow automated car washes. So this is being brought forward because the owners of the project on 639, it was to be the Walmart, have shifted and are now attracting renters or prospects for their out parcels. And one of the tenants that they wanted to have out there was a car wash that uses not a permitted use in the PSC district. And so this amendment would create a definition of an automated car wash that requires, with standards, I should say, that requires some architectural treatments where you'd have metal exteriors and siding should not be allowed. The building must be constructed of brick with masonry or other similar types of materials. Vacuum stations should not be placed in the front yard and you should have a designated parking space. The structure should be oriented so that the queuing of the car wash cannot impede ingress and egress to the property. And the site, the site will be staffed at all times during operations. Right now in the B1 district, car washes are permitted, any type of car wash is permitted. The automated car wash would be the use specifically allowed in the PSC district. And like I noted, it would be required to be staffed at all times. So essentially what you see in the car wash industry now, a lot of car washes where you drive in and there's an attendant there that kind of directs you in, that's a, that's a manned facility. You also see some convenient, gas station, convenience store facilities have car washes as a part of their operations. Those would be permitted as well because those are indeed staffed with staff on the inside of the building. As long as that car wash is open, or, or as long as that convenience gas station store is open, then their car wash could operate. So they, they would have onsite attendants as well, although they're just inside the building. So that is the purpose of the amendment. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Board members.
Mr. Hughes.
Mr. Thomas, uh, Mr. Thomas.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Thomas, and then I'll, Ms. Law.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Hughes, in, in this particular definition, I, I did a search for water just to see if it was regular potable water or reused water. And I didn't find water in the ordinance at all. We didn't make any reference or don't intend to make any reference?
Most new car washes recycle a lot of their water. So, I mean, when you say make reference to limit water or what reference would you be looking for?
Yeah, I was just, I, I thought we would have some sort of link that said X percentage had to be reused water or something of that nature. But you didn't go to planning commission, didn't see that as necessary? Okay.
I wouldn't, I would say it was an issue that was raised. I mean, it's certainly something we could talk to, to Joey about, see if there's an issue with reuse. But most, to keep their costs down, most of these facilities recycle their water.
Mrs. Law.
Can you tell me where these would be limited to, what areas?
The PSC district. So any property has its own planned shopping center. And right now there are only a couple.
So like down in Dahlgren, they have the big shopping center on one side. Then across the street and down a little bit, there's a car wash on the other side, but they don't have it right there with, you know, TJ Maxx and, and Walmart and that type of thing. So you're saying a car wash could be in the middle of a parking lot with a nice shopping buildings, ten spaces down?
If a property owner chose to set their site up that way, they could do that. An example I can, the one I can think of that's close to the example that you're using, on Harrison Road, there's a car wash in front of, as an out parcel in front of the Home Depot out on Route 3. That is the, the first example that comes to my mind where you talk about a car wash being in a shopping center. It's a manned facility. It's an out parcel, but it is a part of that larger shopping center.
So can I?
I have one question. What about water usage of, are there going to be any limits or controls on how much? No. And Mr.'s, Mr.'s?
Like I said, most of these facilities now, because of the cost, there's a cost associated with using that water. So most of them recycle that water and use it repeatedly or a number of times to control their costs.
So I've, I have two questions on that. Number one, because I'm thinking of like the Ladysmith area, that's what I know best. If, if this passes, I would imagine that the Food Lion Shopping Center is a planned, I would imagine it's a planned, one of these PSCs, planned shopping center? Would the Food Lion area be one where you have all the ABC store and?
Yeah, I know what you're talking about. I can't tell you confirmed, I don't want to say yes, and it might be B1.
You don't think it was? I guess my, I guess my concern is if, even if it is, or if it is, and they, it expands or, you know, they add land to it, I, I just, I don't know, a car wash, I, I just, it would, it would seem kind of odd to me, out of place. But the second thing is, as we move forward in a county, my concern is, yes, I mean, obviously for a car wash, the more water they use, the, the more they're going to have to pay the county in bill. But we're having an issue right now. I mean, until we get a, until we get a straw in the rap a hennet, we, we're limited on, and I don't know how much water, I don't know how much water these things are going to use per day, but we, we do have a limit on how much water we have available to us. I mean, and we're growing at a, you know, we've grown 7% in the last four years. So my concern is when you have, you know, Pendleton growing at a rapid pace, you know, I would think that it would be almost a, if, wherever, if you're going to approve this, you would say, hey, look, for the, for water-saving purposes, you would want them to recycle the water rather than be using potable water. It's just like you have Ladysmith Village years ago, they were eventually, I think we made them, they were using potable water for watering their plants, you know, and it just didn't make sense when you have a water shortage that you don't use some sort of recycled water or reused water or something rather than use potable water.
Sure. Well, my suggestion then would be that we take a step back then and amend the ordinance where it addresses all car washes. Because right now, car washes are a by right use in the B one district, and there's no prohibition or requirement that they have that they use, reuse their water at a certain percentage. So if that's the concern, then I would say we should address this holistically and address all car washes. Because today, I could find a piece of B one property, open a car wash, and not have any restriction.
I think it's tougher to put a permit down, though, on something that's been here for a while. Like if you have, and I believe Mr. Moore does, but if you go down to Route one south where Mr. Moore has his car wash, I think he did put one in, a reuse water. I would have a hard time saying, going back to a current car wash and saying you have to do this now.
Well, no, no, I wasn't speaking about going back and retro applying. I'm just saying, any, any B one property today, I could come in and develop a new car wash without any restrictions. So my point was, if we were going to place a restriction on the water usage, then we should go back and apply it to the B one district also. So any new car wash would have to adhere to that standard as well.
Okay, Mr. Sealy.
No, you go ahead. I'll go later.
So we just spent twenty-six million dollars on a road improvement project for economic development. A car wash in that corridor for us is kind of a big deal because we're looking for bigger kinds of projects, at least in my mind we were. So do we really want to say, I mean, I don't have a problem with one on Route one or some of the other facilities around. But when I look at where this is actually being asked to be put, is it the best, highest use of the property?
Yeah.
It's just, it's a question that comes to mind, and I get it, they own the property, somebody's asked them, but is it the best place?
Going to take a lot of car washes to get the county six million dollars back, huh?
Well, and my question to you, Mr. Hughes, do you think it's the best use as a planner? I mean, you, it's your profession. Would you, if you were planning this, would you, would you put that there? Would that be your recommendation?
Actually, before you add that, this would, if this is three parcels back from the roadway, this would still apply to that.
Well, I don't know that we have three parcels back there. They're all pretty much right along six thirty-nine.
Well, I would a hundred, a thousand percent agree with you in any frontage. But I don't know that this, again, I have no knowledge of this.
Well, that's why I'm asking him from the county planning perspective, you know the parcels. Would you say this was the highest, best use?
Mr. Sealy, I don't like to use the term highest and best use, but I would say,
I don't think that's a great question for him.
I think your expectations are not out of line.
And I'm good with that. I'm just, for lack of words.
Is it, is it what we would have expected there? Probably not. But we don't control the property. So now you ask me as a, as a public servant to step into someone's property rights.
I understand, and I,
And I can't do that.
I'm just looking.
That's probably for us to discuss more than him because the reality is, we never plan for something small. We plan for something big in that area. So now we're going to get ten small things to make that right? And I tend to agree that it's not the best use in that area.
I mean, there are places that I think it fits.
Yeah, but.
I'm not sure this, this particular stretch of commercial real estate is, because we're not looking.
It's not. I mean, that's the reality is it's not, and it's up to us to say, do we want to have an automatic approval for car washes? Or do we want to have a little more control for car washes? So I'm going to vote for a little more control if that's the case, because I'd rather have a store that could do more revenue than a car wash.
And if I can play on that too, I agree. I think that.
Say that again, please.
I know, that's a, it's a rare day that we agree.
I agree with Mr. Thomas.
Yeah, I agree with Mr. Thomas. I do, all right. But.
The end is near.
I do think that we spent twenty-six million dollars to widen that road for economic development. And with the water park coming to the north of us and Caroline's population increasing by seven percent in the last three years, four years, I would like to see something, something really nice go there and hold out. And I don't think the developer would want that too. I'll be honest with you, I'm kind of, I don't know, I just think that we were thinking something bigger than, you know, another, whatever, another pizza joint or another, you know, car wash or something like that. I think we were looking for something that's, you know, we don't, we haven't had in Caroline a while, and that's why, you know, that's why we've done it. So I would agree that we should hold off and.
Mr. Chairman.
So, Mr. Underwood?
I think we should, we should have learned now that we should leave flexibility on our side rather than
Right.
box ourselves in.
Yep.
So I think, right now, I think we're all seeing the same, from the same sheet of music. And that this should not, definitely should not just be automatically part of this development. So I think we're.
Mrs. Law?
My point is, I think for my, my own self, I need to get together with planning and look at some map of that area. There's got to be someplace in Caroline for, that are appropriate for car washes. Because car washes most likely use less water than somebody trying to wash their car at home. Because they do, they recycle and they're efficient with how much they use. But I, along with the rest of you, are not just car launched and they can go someplace. But I don't have a good feel for where would be appropriate places. Because it's, we're talking the other side of the county. I know the name drags. But where water lines run and where different businesses are and slopes and traffic flows, I need to do some studying. So can we just?
Well, what, what makes it, yeah, what makes it more restrictive? And I think that's the way we should go is, can I, can I make vehicle car washes by special exception only? Or something of that nature? And then every car wash, regardless of location, has to get some sort of approval. And then we get, as a board, we have more ability to say, this is where a car wash can go.
Can we still keep guidelines with certain things that they have to do?
Sure.
So I think we need to work on that before we pass anything.
Yep. So you've got direction, I think?
Well, hang on, I need some more direction.
Okay.
Because it reminds you when you adopted the electric charging and fueling, electric charging stations, there's a provision in there that those cannot front on, cannot be on the front edge. So going back to Mr. Forehand's point, is that something that you'd like to see in the ordinance? Where they cannot be on the main strip, the main out parcel? So the electric charging and fueling, the electric charging stations have to be at least one parcel removed from the corridor. So where it's going across the street, it's not fronting on six thirty-nine airs. It would be behind, it'd be a second parcel in, and there's likely to be a use in front of it of some type.
But there's a distinct difference between a car wash on six thirty-nine with a four-lane road that's got brand-new asphalt than a car wash across the street from Pendleton, which is where one exists right now.
And this would be a different type of car wash. This car wash should be a facility that would have to be a tubular. If you look at the, the criteria, it is a tubular system where you would drive your car in. So it has to be driven in. It couldn't be the Cinerblock Four Bay facility where you just hop out and grab the sprayer. This is not that type of car wash. This is more of the newer car wash.
The industrial version.
Yeah. So.
Yes. And that's when most people wash their car.
He's one of those King George all the time.
So what would the, so how would we like to dispose of this?
Send it back to the planning commission to see how it can become a special exception.
So let's, let's do that. Let's, I don't think we need to vote on that. Do we just, we just send it back to the planning commission?
You probably need a motion.
Yeah. We do need a motion. All right, I'll take a motion then.
Mr. Chair. Hang on one second before you, would you want to look at the B one district as well? Because as I said, car washes are by right right now in the B one district. So do you want to include that as a part of this as well?
Can we just send the whole ordinance back and look at it?
Yep.
Okay. Well, that's going to be an expansion because this is specific. Okay. Very good.
So I need a motion, send it back to the planning commission?
So move Mr. Chairman back to planning.
I need a second. I have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion, that is sent back to the planning commission for further. All right, the next one is the discussion of highway mowing and litter pickup. Is this Mr. Shebal?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As you may have noticed tonight, when you pulled in, we have the Milford Water Tower is completely encapsulated, and they are sandblasting that as, is ongoing right now, and they need a color selection. And as part of that.
Mr. Shebal, I think we're on, we're on seven.
I got you. I was up there looking at water towers. Yep, that's the next one after. Discussion of highway mowing, thank you. Highway mowing, as you know, VDOT had mentioned that they had provided the county with pricing. Their pricing was sixty-five thousand, one hundred dollars, and that was to mow two times a week between April and October. So basically fifteen mowings. And with that, that's strictly picking up the trash and mowing. Knowing that the Ladysmith area needs a little more care than that, we have looked at using a contract that we currently have for doing lawn care maintenance. And essentially, we would end up mowing that area. It would include litter pickup. It would include edging of the sidewalks, edging of the curbs. It would include mowing two passes beyond either the sidewalk or the walking trail, depending on which side of Ladysmith Road you're on. Overseeding, it also includes herbicide control. It includes mulching twice a year. It also is trimming the trees on an annual basis. And then to remove and blow all of the debris off of the sidewalks and the walking trail and out of the curb and gutter and keeping the weeds out of the curb and gutter. So doing that through, on an ongoing basis, May, April, May, and June, the total amount needed is forty-two thousand, oh ninety-three. The annual impact is ninety-eight, four thirty-six. So we put that into the budget for next year. So we have that money set aside. I believe that if you really want to maintain that area as a manicured mowing and not just mowing, that you would need to do more than what VDOT is offering. The other locations would strictly be mowing, and again, it's on those same bases. So you'd get a few more mowings than what VDOT was allowing in those other locations. I'll be glad to answer any questions. I know there's a lot in that memo if there's any questions.
I have one.
Yes.
Mrs. Sealy, we planted trees, bushes or something in the strip on Ladysmith Road. This doesn't say anything about watering those baby trees this summer.
So that's actually in the contract. The contractor's responsible for doing that for the first twelve months.
Okay, I didn't see that in there.
Yeah, that's VDOT's responsibility as part of their, the Ladysmith Road widening.
VDOT's going to water them?
The contractor is, yes, ma'am. Yep, they've given us the schedule when he's supposed to be doing that. And then at the end of the year, if any of them have died, they're to be replaced as well.
Anyone have anything else, Mr. Underwood?
Yeah, Mr. Shebal, you guys are recommending option two. That's.
Yes, sir. You know, that, we keep going out to Ladysmith Road when you can get complaints from the grass growing on the sidewalks and grass growing in a curb and gutter, grass growing on the curbs themselves, currently on a small section. This actually would include all of that.
So the total cost of that is ninety-six thousand?
On an annual basis, yes, sir.
On an annual basis, correct.
That includes the four areas on two oh seven as well.
So not for them. It does include mowing two oh seven from Route one all the way to Enterprise Parkway. It also includes between the flashing lights in front of the high school. It also includes between the flashing lights at the school board office.
My, my concern, Mr. Shebal, as I was going to say, is from Hanover on three oh one, I don't see anything included there, and I think that's, that's horrible as well.
It wasn't something the board had brought to our attention previously. We can definitely get pricing to do more.
See, my feeling was that when we implemented the cigarette tax, my understanding that we would be using those funds for things like this pickup and those things where it would not have an impact upon other budgeted services. So I think if we need to increase these services to make the county look better with grass cutting and litter, then those funds that we didn't have before that are coming from that, that fund should allow us to make the county look better as a whole. So I think we, I would like to see a full-on charge to maintain the grass cutting and the litter and not just.
In the entire county?
Yes.
Okay. VDOT's somewhere around three million just to do bush hogging now.
I understand that, but I'm not saying we spend three million, because I don't, what I'm saying, I know we're collecting a good amount of money for cigarette tax.
So how often would you want to cut the grass in the county? VDOT does it twice a year now.
I think we need at least three additional times.
Three additional times.
Yeah, three or four additional times.
So do you want me to get three or four? We'd be glad to get pricing for whichever.
I would like to. And then, because this problem isn't going away, it's only going to get worse. We're going to have to come up with solutions to these issues. And I think we need to look forward, again, look forward and not just put a Band-Aid on the issue. If you're only doing one specific area in this, in a rural county of this size, then you're just putting a Band-Aid on. I think we need to begin to address the greater problem.
Agree. Yeah, the only thing that we're required to do, and that was because of a decision the board has made previously, we're required to maintain Ladysmith Road in the new construction area. The board asked for additional improvements that VDOT said they would not maintain, that we would have to. So that's why that piece is in there. The other stuff are things that the board has added on in one of the meetings. So we just went through and got the same pricing information that VDOT had, but.
I understand your rationale. I'm just saying, I'd like to see us go a little further now.
We'll be glad. So VDOT's already got those pricing for the whole county, so we'll do, we can just get that number and we can bring it back in the next meeting.
Mr. Shebal, just for everyone else's benefit, this is, the price was done by a third party. A lot of that is currently done by staff, correct?
We don't maintain any roadways at all.
Litter pickup and the phone calls to get stuff out of the curb and gutters done by staff currently?
Well, we were doing it until the board said we shouldn't be doing that, so which brought us to where we are now to do the curb and gutter.
Yeah. So I guess what I'm saying is that these areas, two oh seven, Ladysmith Road, Route one, Route three oh one, would be done by a third party, which would free up, in some, to some measure, some of our county staff to go do other projects that, that might arise. Is that an accurate statement?
We don't do anything county staff. I mean, we've got a litter crew that goes and picks up bad areas throughout the county as that's necessary.
Correct. But this wouldn't be included, that these, some of these areas are currently on your list to pick.
It could, yeah. I mean, we just. Yeah, I mean, we just picked up Carmel Church. So the area here in Carmel Church, we spent four days picking up Carmel Church. So that would have been four days. We could have dumped up trash somewhere.
And that's that's my only point is that we're we're hiring out some some areas that are currently done by staff, which would free up some of that staff to do other other locations.
For trash pickup only.
For for trash pickup. Mr. Mr. Sealy, did you have any?
Well. We're going, I mean, the two estimates, one is sixty five, and then when you look at. So we're gonna go in and do a lot more work on a road that we just built. We're gonna spend thirty three thousand more dollars. Cause the prices goes from sixty five to ninety.
Well, V dot didn't include any.
Ninety eight.
V dot did not include any mulching. They did not include any.
My my point is, we 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 did a road improvement. We put in six, and now we're gonna put in thirty three thousand dollars a year to maintain it.
Well, it's a hundred, yes.
Yes.
I mean. It it's thirty three thousand this year. It'll be forty five thousand dollars next year. It'll soon be another hundred. Where's the line for where, I mean, where's the line for this? Because it's not gonna get any cheaper. This is the rock bottom where we're starting.
One of the uh, Ms. Ms. Long, did you have any?
I'm I'm just having a lot of trouble with this. I love for our county to look pretty, but we're gonna have businesses coming. And there's businesses at the intersection. I don't think we should be maintaining the property around a business. They should have enough pride in their business to wanna keep things sprayed and trimmed up to make people wanna come in there and shop. We cannot, there is no way. Plus, I think we already have some of our cigarette taxes obligated to uh, parking wrecks. We can't mow the whole county. I wish we could, but I don't, I'm be very interested to see what the the price comes back on that. And I mow in front of my house on the roadway because it's my property and I want it to look nice. I don't think we can afford to to mow all of Caroline, nor is it our responsibility to take care of businesses. Uh, their property should be taking care of theirs. But I am in favor of protecting the upgraded investment that we did on uh, Ladysmith Road. I'm glad V dot's going to be watering the trees. Why they will water them and not mulch them, I have no idea. So I understand we need to do that. But uh, we have a lot of needs and I I just think we're looking at something that's.
What I'm gonna.
Mr. Chairman, and and I'm just gonna make my comment. When we started the cigarette tax, that was to provide services to the county so that residents didn't have to pick up the tab. That was monies that we were not getting. I don't want that money to be put into our other operating costs. But the beautification and the improvement of the county without putting the burden on the taxpayer.
And I agree wholeheartedly with that. But remember, we already have half of that parking wrecks.
I agree. So even if we spend that amount yearly, the majority of that money is coming from folks passing through this county is what we wanted. So it's having a very positive impact on the county, minimal positive uh, impact on the citizens who live here. So I think we're doing a super job there, a smart plan to to spend that money for the betterment of the county without impacting citizens.
But I think we'd have to ask Tamika how much money is in the cigarette tax, cause I know we've got half of it going to parking wrecks. So how much would that leave us to go toward maintenance of grounds? If that's what the board decided to do.
Four hundred. Do we allocate, or we have fifty percent of that of that bucket of money?
Fifty percent went to.
Unallocated. I mean, I.
It was it was eight hundred thousand, was it not?
Seven hundred and forty three thousand.
Seven hundred and forty three thousand.
A lot of that was front loaded for purchase of the of the stamps and the.
Yes.
Yes. So fifty percent was placed in a Parks and Recreation Reserve Fund balance and the remaining um, lies within the general fund.
So if I can, if I can just add by, and this has been a big thing for me. Uh, a couple of years ago, I know, Mr. Shebal, you guys were doing it on Ladysmith Road. Um, we do a trash pickup along Ladysmith Road and um, it hasn't been done for the last couple of years. And as you leave, if you're going eastbound, uh, over the last couple of summers, the curb and gutter there, which looks really nice, when it's maintained, um, has had literally, we have trees growing out. We have crabgrass during the summer between the seams and the cement. And it it looks horrible. And we've just spent twenty six million dollars. And if we're gonna attract business, the last thing I want is, I mean, to to make the area that we put all this money into to look terrible. And this covers, this isn't just about Ladysmith Road. And by the way, Ladysmith Road covers four of our districts. It's Port Royal, it's Madison. It's um, Mattuponai, and it's Western Caroline because people have to go through Ladysmith Road, the traffic light to get into the Western Caroline District. And I just think that we're being penny wise and dollar foolish. We've spent all this money. I I I want that corridor to look pristine because that is gonna be a business engine of ours. We know that Carmel Church already is a business engine. And we hope that Ladysmith also will be a business engine for us, a different type of business engine, but still a business engine. And when you're going down and you see crabgrass coming, it's like the same reason we hired a prior property maintenance person. We've got someone coming into our budget soon to do property maintenance as far as, hey, when people are doing violations, well, why would we hire that person? We hired that person because we don't want used cars in people's yards in certain areas. We want our county to look nice and we want our county to look nice to attract others. So to me, I see it as a business investment that is not just covering Ladysmith Road. It's covering Carmel Church. It's covering near the high school. It's it's the aesthetics um, that play a huge role in it. And not having certain areas of Ladysmith Road done, uh, the last thing we're gonna want is to have that new investment look overgrown. And the grass already needs to be cut um, in the median. And to me, I say, in my opinion, we look at, go with option two and then look at other areas in the county. I am perfectly fine, Mr. Underwood, with looking at other areas. I agree one hundred percent. I mean, any place that we can, we can't do the whole county, obviously, but any place that is highly visible in the county that people go through and that, you know, we that we want to look nice, we we need to, we need to address that. Anyone else have, Mr. Thomas?
Well, I mean, I think we've covered it. The one thing that that nobody's touched on is this used to be the responsibility of V dot. And this is another basically unfunded mandate we're getting from V dot or from the state when they stopped doing things like this. So we're picking up another thing that is coming from Richmond and we might as well do what we can while we can. So I'd say we do something right away and uh, start freeing up those people to do the other areas we just discussed. That's my opinion.
So do you have more of your motion?
Mr. Black?
Yes.
Can I go back and clarify the cigarette tax money? FY twenty four, all of the cigarette tax money, we didn't know how much we were gonna get, but I think we budgeted five hundred thousand. Was just general fund revenue. The board did not set any priorities or put that in any special fund until you just now put half of it in that Parks and Rec Fund. We we'll be glad to, you know, budget whatever, wherever you want that to go for FY twenty five. But remember, whatever you're taking out of FY twenty four is just general, it was just general revenue, just like personal property or anything else that makes up the budget on revenue.
So, okay. So uh, do you, did you make the motion?
For which option?
I'll I'll make a motion. We adopt option two from the from the packet. Do I have a second? Oh, I have a motion by Mr. Forehand and a second by Mr. Thomas to adopt option two.
Question. Where's the money coming from?
Well, Mr. Mr. Uh, Mr. Um, Cully said it has to be the un uh, the un, the ba- the fund balance right now, correct? For the for the current budget year until July one. Yes, until July one, yeah.
But don't you think in this motion, we ought to at least say where the rest of it's gonna come from in the future?
That's fine. Sure.
Well, while we discuss that, we'll discuss the budget.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. Okay.
Can we, can, Mr. Chairman, can we, can we um, amend the motion just to take the money out of the fund balance for this year and then we'll discuss?
Till uh, July first.
Till July first?
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
I'll I'll amend my motion to um, the fund this until July one, until adoption of the new budget. So motion and a second.
Is that gonna be the whole thing, Mr. Shebal?
Forty two oh ninety three will take care of the rest of this fiscal year.
Forty, so that's where we were on the fiscal year anyhow?
Yeah. Okay.
We do an option two, forty two thousand, right?
Yep.
Okay.
A motion and a second and discussion. And and the rest will be addressed through our budget process for the next.
Continue to the budget.
So we have the amended motion and then a second, an amended second. All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries six nothing. Alright, on to.
Can I ask Mr. Sealy a quick question? Mr. Sealy, uh, Mr. Sealy, listen to me. Uh, Mr. Shebal, I'm looking right at you. Listen, Jeff. When was the last time the county had a full litter staff?
Uh, about two months ago. We actually did really good.
How many do you have on?
We've got two right now. We just, one just resigned a couple of weeks ago. Um, but we had a great crew for about two months and we're just doing a tremendous job.
A cu- a crew is two, four, five?
Three.
Three. So we did have three. How long did they work for the county, do you know, before before the other two left? It seems to me we have trouble keeping them, which I understand. I would not wanna do that work.
Yeah, it's it's an, it's a revolving door. Um, I think we've got one, one that's been in between a site attendant and and litter. Um, Raymond's been probably the longest, just over a year now. Um, the other ones, two, three months and then they're gone.
Um, and and that's part of the 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 problem with with the litter, which is why we're trying to get groups to come out. And I I think we need to push your bag for cash. Is that what you call it?
Trash for cash.
Trash for cash, whatever. Uh, because there certainly should be uh, different clubs and groups that would be willing to do that for a day. Maybe not five days a week, but for a day. So uh, I'd like to see us push that a little bit.
So we are, just to let you know, we do have a team up for cleanup coming up in April. Um, so that's being advertised and pushed right now. So hopefully we'll get some groups to do that. Uh, we've also been in contact with an organization in Fredericksburg that works with um, our local um, youth that have to do community services hours. Uh, and they provided us with some numbers of what it would take for them to actually come to the county and they would actually coordinate and run the entire program to manage the the kids. And uh, we would just have to provide them with uh, bags and pickers and vests. Um, but they would basically supervise, monitor and set up all the signs and do all the work. So we're working through that, trying to to see uh, what that would cost and and what that best bang is for the buck for that as well.
Mr. Mr. Shebal, yes. How are we going on that flyer that we were talking about in the meeting?
For the.
Trash and then like with the sheriff's office and the DA and so forth. How are we coming on that?
So that is done.
That is done?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so all the entities have put in the, all the entities have put in their information?
So you're talking about the the flyer for uh, the the cleanup to team up cleanup?
No. In the meeting that we had, we talked about a flyer in which the sheriff's office, the DA, you, we're all gonna talk about what we're doing for litter pickup. We were gonna try to get the schools to, anyway, I'll I'll talk to you offline about it.
Thank you.
Okay, alright.
Thank you.
Sounds good. Okay, so we have a motion, a second. Um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Oh, we did. Okay, we already voted. Sweet. Alright, um, next one is, uh, we are going to uh, section, uh, number eight. The paint of the water, of the towers.
Yes, sir. Jump back on that, that I got a little antsy on the first time. The uh, Caroline County is kind of in a unique circumstance that uh, we are currently working on a contract and we're hoping to have that in front of you tonight. Um, didn't quite make that, trying to go through all the legal reviews still, and it's taken quite some time. Uh, we should have it at the next meeting. But um, over the next three years, uh, four years, we will have every one of our water towers repainted. Um, they're long overdue and it's necessary. Um, and as part of that, they've already started on the Milford Tower, which is currently under a preventive maintenance contract. So we'll be bringing the other ones in. Uh, in addition to that, we've got two new towers that are currently being designed, one at MCD and one at Pendleton. So we'll have two more elevated towers that'll be being put up. Um, so we thought now might be the time to revisit the the color choices that we have. Um, right now, we do have the All American City in Carmel Church. Uh, that's now fifteen years old and and um, probably has lived out its life. Um, at least from a two thousand nine standpoint, that's it's on the tank. Um, we did have, I thought the best looking tank really was the one at the rest area. Um, however, that one was demoed some years ago when V dot expanded the wastewater or the um, rest area there at the northbound rest area. So that tower was taken down. I just kind of provided that to give you some idea. Um, the one at the high school, I think blue with the blue background and 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 home of the Cavaliers, um, brings a lot of pride to the school over there. Um, I would think that one would be fine. Um, I've been giving you a calendar from the company that's providing our services. Um, and and just to give you ideas on colors. You can pick so many colors. I've got a color chart back there. It's got a thousand colors. So they can paint just about any color you wanted. Um, but I didn't know if there was a particular design that you wanted. You just wanna put Welcome to Caroline on it. Um, and I'd kind of let you kind of look at those. So one of them that I'll bring to your attention is maybe in October. So if you looked at your October one and you went to the um, top right one. So that might look good for the Milford tank as far as the lettering. It's just a big lettering. Because if you you make this and you say like, welcome to Caroline, you either have to be really small to get it where you can see it, you don't traveling up and down the road. Um, or you can make the letters big where you can see it. So you could put just Caroline if you wanted it. If you wanted to do Welcome to Caroline, you could do that in two layers and possibly see that. So i- it's kind of up to you. That tank's a little bit different. The rest of the tanks are Pettisphere tanks. We do have one ground storage tank, it's a hundred thousand gallons. That tank's located behind the old Union Bank shares building. That one's actually a light beige color and that was to blend in uh, with the building that was over there when that was put up. Um, so that tank is a beige color. Uh, I'll note that AP Hill does have a a light cream color, which seems to do really good. It doesn't fade. Uh, it doesn't show dirt as well. Uh, white does show dirt. However, you don't really see the chalking or fading on white. Um, and the blue does fairly well as long as you don't get too dark. Otherwise, you do have a fading issue. So as part of this contract, um, the towers will be painted on uh, in every ten year rotation on the exterior and about eight years on the interior. Um, so that'll be an ongoing scheduled maintenance that'll happen to each of the tanks. Um, it is unique for the tank, at the Milford tank here. When that tank was actually built, uh, they used lead paint then. So the exterior of that tank has lead paint on it. So each year we, or each cycle, we've been recoding what's on there. It now has so much paint, you have to sandblast it all off. Um, which required us to completely encapsulate this thing because of the lead based paint at the very bottom. So they're removing all of that. So that actually was a little additional cost. It's the only tank that has lead paint on it that we have. So that'll be renovated and taken care of this year.
That was a tank from the sixties.
It was, yes, sir.
Yeah. What's the official colors of the school?
Red, white, blue.
What color red and what color blue?
Oh, my God. I don't even know.
Cause they're they're all different.
You'd need to know the numbers of the colors to match them.
I was just thinking that's.
We could probably get that. I don't know, uh, Mr. Thomas might remember, um, when we actually did the uh, home of the Cavaliers and with the Cavalier and everything, we actually did an uh, got with the art class and actually did a contest for the students. And the students in the high school uh, actually designed that and there were, uh, the board selected that one as the winner and that's what we went with. So it's pretty close to what the sketch was. They had to kind of make it fit the tank because of the the uh, the shape of the tank. But that was, that was done by the high school, um, one of the the kids in the school at the time.
Can we just leave that? Is that easy?
Yeah, they'll, they can retrace trace that and leave that the same.
I I like, I think that's good there. We we can do a different graphic on each one, right?
You can if you want. Yes, sir. So one of the questions that we've been asked um, by the the two companies that are building the tank is can we put our name on it? Um, and I said, well, that's something we're going to have a conversation with the board of supervisors with. Um, I would say, you know, we would have to give some parameters, but I would say that if they wanted to do that, then they would pay the annual maintenance cost um, that we have on the tank to maintain the 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 colors. So if they did that, that might make some sense. Um, but I think the board really, we'd need to come up with a policy and we'll be glad to look. So, if they did that, that might make some sense. Um, but I think the board really, we'd need to come up with a policy and we'll be glad to look at that. If that's something the board would be interested in doing. But MCD and Pendleton are interested in having their name um, or.
If they want to pay the tank maintenance cost.
I don't have any problem.
I don't have any problem with that at all.
If not MCD, something that is electrical component, data center related, that would be a graphic and then with, with our, with, with our name on it.
Yeah.
Something.
That's.
Could they do like MCD, Caroline County, Virginia underneath?
Yes, sir. Those are gonna be a little bigger tanks. You got a little more room. They're, they're half a million gallons. Um, the tanks that you see here um, are either two hundred thousand at the high school or three hundred thousand in Cornwall Church. And the one out here is eighty thousand. So, this one's a small tank. Um, and this one's actually a, a stand-legged one where the others are petisphere. So, you'll have a little bigger surface on those also to, to be able to do something.
I mean, we could have the, the secretariat graphic.
I, yeah, that's what I was gonna ask, but I, isn't that an issue with uh, copyright?
Yeah, but we.
A, a running horse shouldn't be copyrighted.
Yeah.
But if you. We don't have, we don't have.
You could just have a horse silhouette.
Yeah, but then you would have to, but, right, you, you could, but then for people that are coming through, if you just have a horse silhouette, how would they know if they don't know? If you don't have a home of secretariat.
Yeah, well.
Then they wouldn't.
We have birthplace and secretariat. Well.
Well, birth.
And, and I did show you.
The same with, the same with uh, Mr. Forehand. I like the idea of each one having a different graphic. Like Home of the Cavaliers, I love that. And maybe Caroline County as a standard on all of them. Welcome to Caroline County. And then under it, you can have a line for MCD, a line for Pendleton. And if this company wants to put a third line out there that says, Tank Painting Provided by whatever their initials, I'm all for that. And they, and they pay the maintenance. I don't have a problem with them advertising on our stuff as long as, you know, we're getting something for it.
I don't have a problem with MCD being the bigger portion of their tank with our name underneath if they're gonna, if they're gonna pay for the tank maintenance. That's a pretty big, how much is tank maintenance for something like that?
Um, I'm gonna say somewhere around twelve or thirteen thousand dollars a year.
I mean, they'd want their name first for twelve grand if they put Caroline County underneath. I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
I mean, they're gonna pay to paint it every whatever.
And theirs is not, theirs is not one that's on a main thoroughfare.
Right, right, right.
That's fine.
It's inside of their property.
It's inside their property.
The same will be true with Pendleton.
Correct.
We need to make a decision on this right now.
So, what I need tonight is I need the color for the tank outside. I'll be back at the next meeting with the contract to paint the other ones. Um, and we'll have a little bit of time to really to figure that out. However, the, the tank pricing that we're gonna be trying to lock in at the next meeting is dependent on what you select. Um, if you look at the first page there and it got the color of the one that looks like a rose, uh, I think that's Jane, uh,
I think Rose is right.
First page in the top left, um, you know, that's probably a pretty expensive paint, paint job on there.
Not happening.
Mr. Sheeple, how well does the pale blue hold up, the light blue?
It does pretty good. Um, if you actually look, you can see Cornwall Church in the, the handout that I gave out. So, that, that bottom, the two on the right are both of just the, the other blue, but you can see the other blues have actually held up fairly well, um, especially the high school. The newer paint that they have at the high school, um, when we redid that one, that was the last tank that was done. Um, that one does have a problem with paint at the bottom that's peeling off, so they do have to do some sandblasting at the bottom on the stem. Um, but that paint actually is probably the best one that's held up with that newer paint than, than any of the other tanks that we've had.
That color is fine with me.
The light, the light blue is not a high school color.
No, the one at the top is the high school. The other one is the Cornwall Church tank, the one below it. So, the two at the top. Well, they're supposed to be the same. It's just faded in the newer paint. It, it, the high school has held up a lot better.
Wait, the high school is older paint?
The high school is the newest out of all of them.
The newest paint, okay, okay. Well, let's go with the high school color. It's not, it's not an official color of the high school, but it's close. It's blue.
Yeah, I think there's.
I think our, I think our blue will fade.
I think blue or white are really all, really.
Well, that's, that's dark blue with red letters.
The high school?
Yeah.
Yeah, but that's the only place it's gonna happen.
No, it's, it's blue lettering on there. It's not red lettering.
So, the Cavaliers, Caroline County and the.
It's all blue, dark blue.
Really?
Yeah, everything.
Looks like red in this picture.
Yeah, everything. It might be the lights above you.
Light blue.
It's all, all a dark blue. The logo and the lettering are all the same colors.
Okay.
It'll blend into the clouds or the sky. Light blue. The same blue you have for the, the high school tank.
Perfect. And then what about, what would you like on the tank? As far as lettering?
The one in Milford?
Yes.
This, this one right here?
Yes, sir.
Keep Caroline clean.
Do you have, how many tanks do we have to decide on? Do you have to have it all tonight?
So, the one here, they're getting ready to start painting. So, they're sandblasting now and they're putting prime coat on, uh, and they will be painting that um, probably next week. So, they'd be, every time the wind and the rain stops them from doing their work, but they're trying to get the sandblasting piece done. And as soon as that's done, they're gonna start putting paint on.
Can we just put Caroline County, Virginia? Just keep it simple?
Caroline.
Caroline, Caroline. Well.
Caroline County, Virginia, I mean.
BA period.
And, and painted by whoever these guys are again.
No.
Do you want to put Caroline County with maybe Virginia under it?
I, I think, I don't, do we need the county? I mean, Caroline, Virginia? There's only one Caroline, Virginia.
Yeah, but there's a Caroline County, Maryland.
Yeah, but that's why we put Virginia, not Maryland.
Yeah, you could put Caroline, Virginia.
Caroline in, in script and then Virginia in smaller offset to the right or something, is that effect?
And we're gonna go with the light blue and the dark blue for Caroline County or Caroline, Virginia?
I'm fine with that.
I, I don't care. That's, those colors are fine.
Um, I'm looking for a.
Let's keep it, get it.
Yeah, light blue.
So, this tank, if you go to February, um, on the right column, the fourth one down maybe, that just gives you an idea of a color. I mean, we'll use the other color, but that might give you an idea on that one. It's a similar.
On the right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
The fourth one down maybe?
Marion County?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, we're gonna use a script. Uh, Caroline will be in script and then Virginia will be some sort of non-script.
Lewiston Park Regional Water System. What do you think we go?
So, I'll give you homework to take this home and look through some of the other tanks. Um, and that way you'll have some ideas when we come back for the other.
Mr. Mr. Sheeple, April, right-hand column.
Something.
On the right.
Thought I would be doing.
There's, there's script and then there's here, but we would just put Virginia there?
Robbins down?
I got you.
You, you follow me?
Yes, sir. You have the third one down?
Third one down, sorry.
Naturally here, something?
Naturally, and then Virginia would be below that.
April, the one on the right?
Third on, third down on the right, but, you know, what I'm saying, script?
Naturally here, yeah, that's what he said.
I'm looking at the script at this point.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
And one, you know, when we look at the bigger tanks, you know, if you're talking about like just a Welcome to Caroline kind of thing, if you actually look at July, the fourth one on the right, I think that lettering, for whatever reason, looks like it popped compared to the tanks that we have now that are just a block letter. But just think about something like that.
Which, which one am I looking at?
So, uh, July, the fourth one down on the right, I guess it's the third one. It's got a tower on top of it, but the, just the lettering on that one just really sticks out.
Mr. Thomas just pointed out, there's one there that has the lights on. It looks kind of cool, so.
That's June. Um, June Mishikawa? Mishawaka?
Yeah. All right, so do we have?
That's kind of cool.
Do we have, do we have the, we have the color set for this one?
We're good.
And we're just looking at the uh, the script for, we're looking at the script. So, we're saying Caroline, Virginia or Caroline County?
I think Car- uh, saying the word county is unnecessary.
And there's no, there's gonna be no artwork on just, just the plane and then the writing, right?
I, I guess. I don't know. What else do we put up there?
That one's kind of hard to put so much art on because.
It's a small tower.
It's got the, the rail and it's such a small tank.
Okay. So, Caroline, Virginia, is that, is that fine? That's fine. All right, we have an agreement.
Sounds good.
All right. Okay. All right, going on to the next one is.
Caroline.
What's that? Caroline?
Going to just Caroline.
Caroline, Virginia.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh.
Just Caroline.
Just Caroline?
That's fine.
All right, that's fine.
Just Caroline.
Just Caroline.
All right.
No Virginia?
We missed that one.
No Virginia.
Missed this one.
And, and the script?
And script.
Okay.
All right, uh, next one we're gonna do is number nine, request for a rebate from Caroline County Utility System for water leak.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion?
No, it's within our limits.
I, I guess my only question is how, how do they person not know that they used five hundred thousand gallons of water in two months? I mean, there was no, there was no, there was no pipe leak. It, they said it was from a toilet flapper.
We actually have one right now and, and uh, that one was actually a toilet, but I've got one right now in Caroline Pines. Um, they're using about thirty thousand gallons a month. And we've been out there. There's no sign of it leaking other than the meters running. Um, they shut it off at the house and it continues to run. So, there's a leak between the house and there, but it is not showing. And, and you would think, but it, it, it takes the path of least resistance.
I, Mr. Sheeple, I did some math on this and I'm, I'm not trying to, I just, I'm saying the person doesn't, I, if they have a, like a massive leak, it's underneath or something, I, I get it. But a toilet uses one point six gallons. I was looking up, a toilet uses one point six gallons. So, according to my math, unless I do it wrong, they would have to flush thirty-one thousand five hundred and forty-three times.
So, a toilet, a toilet.
I mean.
A toilet flush is one, one point four to one point six.
I mean, there's a leak and then there's like, I mean.
Yeah, the, the size of the tank is about one point four to one point six. It actually fills up at about four gallons a minute. So, if you've got the toilet flap straight open, you're flowing four gallons a minute. So, over a thirty-day period, that is a lot of water that can go through there. If it's in an upstairs bathroom and even if it's only flowing two gallons a minute, um, over a period of time, that adds up pretty fast.
And a resident only gets a bill on the county system every two months or three months?
Every month.
Ev- every month now.
Yeah, and as soon as we notice that there's an anomaly, we're a month, about, yeah, well, we're fifteen days. So, we read on the first and the bill goes out on the fifteenth. But when I read, if it's, as soon as we read, when we read on the first, unless it's on a weekend, as soon as we read, if we see somebody's used twice as much as they normally do, we automatically go knock on the door, we check to see if the meter's running, let them know they've got something wrong. So, anytime that we see that. So, we need to notify them immediately. So, we don't wait another fifteen days for the bill to come out and then the mail to send it to them. So, we're very proactive on those.
But it could be a month to forty-five days.
It could be.
Before they would notice. And this one's after two months.
Yeah.
So, is this, is, is your recommendation this for the refund?
You know, it's, it's, we got the code that allows, you know, one rebate in, in a thirty-six-month period and maybe had one already. So, it's a second one. Um, you know, it's, they did fix it. Once they found the issue, they didn't continue on. Um, one of the issues and the reason why she's got the problem is uh, people don't realize this, but if you use the little chlorine dunks that go in the back tank, um, it actually dry rots and causes the rubber flapper to get hard. And when it gets hard, it doesn't seal and your toilet leaks. So, a lot of people use those and don't realize it's actually harmful.
But don't you like, don't you hear that though? I mean, I called a, I called a, I called the plumber and, you know.
I hear, I hear a drop of water in my house when it goes. I'm, I'm pretty conscientious, right, but I have.
What I don't hear is the one in the basement that the kid went down and.
Right.
And, and, and I've actually had friends in Ladies Menville, anywhere with the basement, with bathroom.
Yeah.
You know, you send the kids out to get out of the first level, they come back and then four days later, you go downstairs and toilet's been running for four days.
Right.
And there's a, some people that have a, um, their bedrooms downstairs, but they get two bedrooms and bath upstairs and the upstairs one might run and they might not realize it, so.
Okay. That's fine. All right. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries six nothing. All right, we are.
Ten A.
Uh, ten A, we have to do the uh, festival permit.
Rebate, first of all, for the uh, Ruerton or the Reedy Church Ruerton, an amount of two hundred and fifty dollars. And we, and we probably need to look at the, the ordinance a little bit more to put something in, like giving the county administrator authority to rebate for nonprofits to sell less than a hundred and fifty tickets or something like that. And then that would.
Let's make the numbers not so, the, the Bowling Green Ruetons Fish Fry.
How many people's that?
Average ticket sales is around five hundred.
Wait, that's not the Fish Fry at J.C. Park.
Yeah, it is. You've been, you've ever been to five hundred people there?
Sure, it seemed like to me. They must have been hiding in the back, but, I, I mean, that's fine. What?
You're saying that, that all those organizations dump all that money back in the community.
Right, right, but, but they're.
Let's be careful. I'm just saying, let's be careful when we set the numbers. So, Mr. Colley, I, I don't mind giving him the authority to do it, but let's.
Yeah, I mean, we, we've got other.
We've got a lot of other.
No, well, not the small ones. We, we've got other venues that have thousands of people at their event.
Right.
I think in that case, they should, they should have to pay something. But the small, local ones that are nonprofits that have been here, they never had to go through a festival permit before.
A lot of them haven't.
So, all right, well, well, my, my motion is gonna be first of all, to rebate the Reedy Church Ruetons their fee for the festival permit. I cannot say festival, for their festival permit that they just had in September.
Second.
All right, we have any, uh, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. You will have your, sir, you'll have your two hundred and fifty dollars back now.
A follow-up.
Okay.
Would be to, to have staff check to make sure that the smaller festivals we have in the county would fit under the parameters that we just discussed tonight. And I guess the Ruerton Fish Fry is probably the big exception of five hundred, but we figure out a number and have Mr. Colley come back and tell us.
Well, when we just do it for five oh one C threes? Well, when we just do it for five oh one C threes? Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, yes.
I'm, I'm a little concerned about how we might enforce that, the, the ticket sales and how.
Right.
How the county minister is gonna predetermine ticket sales.
Right, right. Is there, is there a reason why we can't just do for uh, Mr. Sealy? Is there, is there a reason why we can't just do it and just say it's for five oh one C threes? Cause I don't, I think if, if a five oh one.
Cause the, the state fair is a five oh one C three. They have a huge component that's five oh, this was our discussion that night because they have a five oh one C three component that's part of the state fair. So, you can't just say that because it's gonna exempt them in many, many categories.
And I, I think it should be based on population. Right.
This, and this is gonna be a complicated situation that you're gonna need.
Well, then that's.
Our, that's why we can't solve this tonight. We need to let.
But no, we're direct, we have to do it. And we could leave it as it is tonight and say the county administrator, like just with the Reedy Church Ruetons did. They gave us a check for two hundred and fifty dollars. We didn't cash the check. We held on to their check. So, somebody came or comes next week, we can do the same thing and then either have the county administrator or the board decide if that's one that's has no impact to the county and should be rebated.
I think our attorney may have something to say about how we do this, but.
Mr. McKenzie, is it something good? Cause if it's not good, I don't wanna hear it.
Yeah.
It's good?
I respect that. No, I mean, it's. There's, so I've looked at the, the legal issue on this and I think as, as long as it's uniform, I, I'm comfortable. Um, it's, a lot of the concerns come out just as a practical matter. How do we, how do we do this in a way where staff can make the decision relatively easily? I mean, I'm not, my, my preference wouldn't be for it to have to come back to you every time. Um, cause I'm just, I feel like there's gonna be a lot. Yeah, I think the idea with these permits is that there should be a lot of them, um, because everyone should be filing for a permit if they want to have a festival. And uh, my, my first choice wouldn't be for every request for a waiver to come back to you as the board. Um, but I also don't know uh, how staff could make, could, could have the discretion to decide who's charitable and who's not. Um, I recognize the problem with the five oh one C three thing is that there's a lot of five oh one C threes out there. The other option that I've discussed with staff is to just lower the, the, the application fee to something that's not as burdensome to any organization. Um, and that would just be applied uniformly.
I don't, I, I don't like that totally, but I, I think giving the county administrator the authority to waive the fee for a festival that has an attendance a hundred, two hundred, it's okay. And if it's over that, then he has to bring it back to the board, cause if you bring the Bowling Green Ruetons, that's probably gonna be approved. If you have a thousand people that are coming to a music festival, that probably shouldn't be approved. Cause we have to base it on impact to the county. Because we have to base it on impact to the county. And impact to the county is not just what resources we use, but what that group does for the county. And, you know, as Mr. Gordon said, they're basically a small group that all the money they collect goes back to the county.
Right, and that's true of most of the, of the organizations doing the things that have gone on for decades that have never gotten a permit.
Now, these larger groups, I'm all for them paying the $250 because it's probably not going to hurt them.
But I think we should let staff and the attorney work out something. Because every time we do this.
Well, they should work it out based on what we've just said.
Right, right, right.
So to clarify, is it, is it any, any event under 200 or is it just charitable events under 200 that you would want the waiver option for? Is it, is it any event under 200 or just charitable events under 200, charitable organizations?
Charitable events are churches.
Churches are already exempt, yeah.
They're already exempt, so.
I mean.
Travis, is the sheriff still here? I didn't see he's got, sorry. How many Ruettin, Bowling Green, the Caroline County Ruettin Fish Fry tickets did we sell?
About 320.
But we've been up to 500? You ever been there? For some reason, that number sticks in my head.
The, the most I can remember, and I, and I, this was a long time ago, would be like 420 at the most, yeah.
I didn't think, I didn't think I'd ever seen 500 people over there, but it could have been. But that's insane, you got, you got 300.
All right.
These other events are saying they got 1,000 people coming.
Right, right, no, no, I'm just trying to put perspective in, that's all.
Okay, so the staff has direction? So we don't need a motion, real?
Thank you, yes, sir.
I want to work with them, so it's, what's the number?
500, right?
500, and is it for any organization at 500?
Any charitable.
Charitable.
Any charitable org, under, 500 or under, that can apply for a waiver, county administrator can approve that?
Yep.
Can apply for a waiver or reduced fee.
Or reduce?
Yep.
With either one?
Make sure you're saying both, we want as much flexibility as possible.
Okay, and then if it's over that amount, it comes back to you? Okay?
Well.
Yep.
If it's over that amount.
Over the, over 500?
If it's over the 500, then they're still in the 250 process without it coming back.
Okay, no option to come back to you, okay, understood, thank you.
Thank you.
So let's go to number 11, is informational calendar items?
Yeah, wants to follow me, he's upset. That's okay, I understand.
Okay.
The groundbreaking for the Sparta station.
Do we have, who's doing this informational calendar items?
Sparta Fire Station, we've talked with the contractor and he's looking after spring break. So try to kind of, we don't have to have a date tonight, but I need you to start planning on when you think you would want one. So after spring breaks, that'll be April 8th or beyond. So if we can find some time after that, they think they'll have enough room to have the construction entrance in and be able to have parking in there to get people in and out.
Can we do, although Caroline's on spring break, I will not be, I'm on spring break this week. Can we do an afternoon if we do it or?
I think we should do it Saturday.
Saturday or Saturday, I mean, I've committed, yes, all right, so, or Saturday, but even if we do Saturday or really, really early morning or late afternoon.
Yeah, just not the second Saturday, if that's possible.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, that's why we're asking you for whatever the board wants.
I've got a commitment, April 13th, and April 20th is the trash pickup.
I didn't get a chance to fully enjoy the Carmel Church Station because at 11 o'clock zoom.
April 6th.
Is that a Saturday? Is that after the date, you're, that's not beyond the 8th?
Yeah, he was, he was saying the second week in April at the earliest.
You want to do it at the end of April?
Then I'm in trouble.
That'll be fine.
I don't think so.
20th is out?
20th is the big trash pickup day.
What is 20th is your trash pickup day?
It's the, no, the countywide one, the huge one. Can't, I'm out.
Now we're getting into Mother's Day.
So you're back into, so you're back into April. What about a late Friday afternoon?
I can, I can do most late Friday afternoon.
Oh, that's right, it's not dark until seven.
Right, we've already passed daylight savings time. You could do 6 o'clock on a Friday evening.
Yep, I'm fine with that.
Yes, that's what I want to be doing.
Let's look for.
April 19th, that's Friday, that sounds good.
Yep, April 19th.
April 19th. Like 6 o'clock, because it's plenty light.
As long as you're not going to prom, that looks good on my schedule.
Ooh, I'll just be coming back from Huntsville, that's not a good day for me.
All right, motion, motion for closed session.
So we'll look at the 19th?
The 19th, I won't, I won't be back, that's my problem.
All right, so we're, so we need to put, we'll put this back on the calendar item in two weeks, but again, we wanted to make sure you all were aware, so.
That's good.
But we need to come up with a date if you want to have one.
Yes, we do.
Yeah, we do. Tamika's coming up.
Calendar items, just information and calendar. We have on the 26th a 4:30 joint meeting with school board. And then, of course, our board of supervisors meeting, and then Easter on the 31st. And that's all we have.
So that's at 4:30 with the school board?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Ah, that's killer, all right. Okay, yes, commission to go on close.
I made that this board convened enclosed being approved to the real estate exception of section 2.2-3711A3 of the Code of Virginia for discussion with staff regarding the potential acquisition of real estate in the Port Roll area for fire EMS use and for further discussion with staff and representatives from the Caroline County School Board regarding the potential acquisition of real estate in the Carmel Church area for use by Caroline County Public Schools.
I have a motion, do I have a second? I have a motion and a second to go in a closed session, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are in closed session.
But this board can, wait a minute. I mean that the Caroline County Board of Supervisors certify that to the best of each board's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully accepted from the open meeting requirement of Virginia law were discussed in closed meeting to which the certification applies, and only such public matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the board.
I have a motion, I have a motion to come out of closed session. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second motion and second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, let's, Mr. Forehand, you so certified that was discussed in closed, uh, closed session was only discussed in closed session?
I so certify.
Mr. Thomas.
I so certify.
Mrs. Long.
I so certify.
Mr. Seelid.
I so certify.
Mr. Underwood.
I so certify.
And I so certify.
Mr. Chair, I may.
Wait, 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 I have a.
Yes, and I so certify as well, I'm sorry, yes.
I have a motion to make coming out of closed session to authorize the county administrator to make an offer in writing and to have a negotiation range that we've discussed and that if the offer is accepted to go with a PSA, a purchase.
Just, just sign a letter of intent utilizing those terms.
A letter of intent for those terms.
I have a motion, do I have a second? Motion and second, any discussion on the motion?
That's just, that's the Port Royal property.
Exactly, Port Royal property.
Motion, all right, so we have a motion and a second. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, I have a motion to adjourn, oh no, recess, 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 motion to recess to.
4:30.
4:30 on the.
26th.
26th of March.
Here.
Yes, here, yes, is there, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank.